All right, we will call the meeting into order. If everybody can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, real quick before we get into special recognition, I would like to ask the board if someone will make a motion to excuse Mallory. She is not feeling well tonight, so if we can have a motion for that.
I'll move to excuse Mallory tonight.
Okay. Patty?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. So we have first and a second. Patty, if you could call for the roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, so we will move on. Item three, special recognition, school bus driver appreciation, and Dr. Pierce will lead us through that.
We are always a little off on our timing with this one because ideally we would be doing school bus driver appreciation when our Director of Transportation is here, April Heiser. And you know she was here a meeting ago as we talked about school bus purchases. And the actual day of school bus driver appreciation is April 23rd. So it's a little off on our timing, but I'm hoping that we can get it all aligned for next year. So April 23rd is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. And just a little bit of history, I won't read all of this to you, but I thought it was interesting for us to think about that at the beginning of the 20th century, children were transported to and from school in horse-drawn carriages. So you think about how far we have come as a society and a system in providing access to families and to students, so children from rural areas and all areas can be transported to school. And every time I'm driving that area where, oh, what's the area? Gosh, help me out. What's the area that we, one of our farthest bus routes?
Plymouth.
Plymouth.
Plymouth, that's the, thank you. That way, I think, well, we have some students that are picked up all the way in Plymouth and transported to and from our schools every day. So our bus drivers do really awesome work. We entrust them with our precious cargo of our children. This is information that April shared with the board when she was here, when presenting the bus purchase plan for next year in terms of the staff that we have working in transportation. It's a big undertaking every day. There are over 10,000 students transported to and from school each day in our system. And she shared the following statistics as well in terms of miles driven every year. And, you know, it's over 2 million. So we just take the opportunity, it's a little off from the actual day, April 23rd, and next year, we're going to make sure this gets done on the night that April is actually here to accept the appreciation and take it back to our bus drivers because we really do appreciate their work. So that is our recognition for this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pierce. Next up is communication from parents, staff, and district residents. Thank you. All right, so the Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors sets aside 30 minutes for communication from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the Board to listen to comments, input, and information. The Board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and learn. Please know the Board's silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the Board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, please remember that your words have impact and you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it's possible your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of your, if you are unsure of the legal effect of your remarks, please seek independent legal advice. Guidelines for addressing the Board. You will be called to the podium at the front of the room. You will have two minutes to address the Board. A stoplight on the screen will let you know when to begin, when you have one minute remaining, and when your time has ended. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. All right. So I believe we had two on.
Yes, first person is Rachel Hillbell.
Okay. Hello, Rachel, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, you're good to introduce yourself and give your public comment.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Rachel. You guys are probably getting to know me a little bit better by now. I hope that you all had a great Easter, spring break, although I know that most of you probably still had to work those days. Tonight, there's a couple of things that I really want to address. First, I did send all of you an email with the resources. And I am aware that there were two grants that were already past due. However, I did send you a third grant that we have until the 30th to apply for. I also did send Dr. Pierce an email with a Zoom link for a Q and A regarding the grant. I believe that's on the 16th of April. The grant is being offered through the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's very similar to the Aware Grant that was gifted from the OSBI, gave it out two years ago. But I am urging you, please, apply for this grant. It's another grant that would implement mental health services over a period of five years. I have offered my services and help in any way. I have a master's in science education, Family Consumer Science is my endorsement, but I've also taken grant-writing classes. I have a bachelor's in psychology, so any way that you can use me or utilize my skills, please, you know my email address by now, reach out. The second thing is something that was brought to my attention today by a co-teacher. The Ben Franklin Transit Board of Directors is considering budget cuts that can include layoffs, a reduction in services, specifically no Sunday service, no midnight service, cutting routes, and the worst of all, getting rid of kids' rights, kids' rights for free. This is, all of the students in Tri-Cities, all the kids that use the bus to get to school, all the surrounding areas, we have to do something to at least let them know where we stand on that. Almost two-thirds of my kids that legacy ride the Transit, which is roughly 100 kids. And then, again, we're dealing with multiple alternative schools. They're not all kids that drive or have access to a school bus. The Transit only needs the transportation that they have. And once again, we're dealing with low-income families and families that might not care too much about their child's schooling or education. As this may be the first time you have heard about it, I urge you to attend in person or via Zoom the board meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00. I forwarded the Board the email that I received with all the information needed. And just a quick look at their budget, says that their budget has actually increased for this year by $4.6 million. And if youth practices were permanently set in place in 2022 and the budget only went up, then it will be, I'm really curious to know where that money is going to be going.
Rachel.
Anyway, I know that I've said this before, but I'm really new to all of this, so I want to help, so please reach out to me through any means. And I hope that you all have a good rest of your evening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rachel. Oh, okay. What was your name? Herbie Brown?
Good evening. I'll just, I have a statement, I'll just read it because I've only got two minutes, but I hope you all had a great day. I am present today on behalf of the NAACP Tri-Cities, Washington, Chapter 1135B. But I'm here to address and just give a comment on the concern regarding the opposition to bills supporting diversity and inclusion in curriculum. You heard enough of it, but I'm just going to share my letter with you on tonight, and maybe if there's a clerk, we can submit that. It says, "Dear Kennewick School Board Members, I am writing to express my deep concern regarding recent actions taken by the Kennewick School Board to oppose a bill aimed at supporting diversity and inclusion in schools' curriculum. As a member of the community and a strong advocate for equitable education, I find it troubling that such actions are being taken, particularly when they contradict the guiding principles and values of the school district. It has come to my attention that certain books featuring essential topics such as Black History and LGBTQ+, to name a few, are being targeted for potential banning within our schools. This decision not only stifles academic freedom, but also goes against the very essence of creating an inclusive and equitable learning environment for all students. The Kennewick School District has long upheld the diversity, equity, and inclusivity principles outlined in its guiding documents and strategic plan. However, opposing a bill that promises, that promotes these principles is contradictory and counterproductive. How can we claim to provide the best education for every child when we actively restrict access to vital resources and perspectives that contribute to their understanding of the world around them? By opposing these bills, the school board is sending a message that the voice, that the voices and experience of marginalized communities are not valued or worthy of inclusion in our educational materials. This not only perpetuates harmful stereotypes and biases, but also undermines the efforts of educators to create a welcoming and affirming space for all students. I urge the Kennewick School Board to reconsider its stance and align its actions with the values and goals outlined in the district's strategic plan. Our top priorities as educators and community leaders should be embracing diversity, fostering belonging, and providing an inclusive education for every child. Thank you for taking this time to address this critical issue. I hope we can work together toward an inclusive and equitable educational environment for all of our students in the school district. And I just don't know if I respectfully submit this letter, but the goal is, is just what I said, to work together, not to build more barriers while we try to figure this out. But prayerfully, our opinions do count as community leaders and activists. So thank you so much for today, and it looks like I made it right on time. God bless you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. And you've got that. Is that all that?
Oh, yeah, just, I'm saying, sorry, yeah, yeah, just don't leave. Wait for comments.
Is that all we have online? Okay. All right, next up, we have Gail Haney.
Gail Hain, but that's okay.
Sorry about that.
And I'm reading from my phone, which is unusual for me, so I might lose it. But anyway, I'm a retired school teacher. I volunteer at Phoenix High School, and I'm a member of the Instructional Materials Committee. I'm here to talk about two things. One is adopting curriculum, and the other is student mental health. As a teacher, I was involved in many committees, language arts curriculum, staff development, site council, too many to remember, and a few that I would like to forget. Anyway, with that question, the current IMC is the best committee that I've ever served on. And I'm not just saying that because I'm serving on it now. The leaders conduct things in a timely manner, they're always prepared. Committee members, parents, teachers, administrators are phenomenal. Everyone takes the job of looking at the materials seriously and report their findings back to the curriculum. A comment was made by someone that the Kennewick School District would no longer rubber stamp all curriculum coming from the committee, as if the members were not able to see what was good and what was not so good. We do not just peruse the material and then say, oh, we accept it. We look at it in very, in very much depth. In fact, there's been a couple of things the last year that we did not accept. One was because it was outdated. It had Calvin and Hobbes cartoons in it, and kids don't even know who Calvin and Hobbes are. And the other was because it didn't really go along with state standards. What I'm asking you to do is keep your mind open. The committee has already done the hard work. I don't expect you, and we don't expect you, to just say, okay, they did it. But respect us as educators, community members, et cetera. The second thing I want to talk about is mental health. Oh, the phone's going. I might have to wing it. I was a teacher for many years, so I should be able to do it. The next topic is mental health of students. I'm concerned with the students I work with at Phoenix. Even though I'm just a volunteer, I do quite a bit of work there. And there are kids who have issues, and not just there, in all of our schools. And I'm worried about the mental health care going away and not addressing the needs of the kids who need that. I realize that the budget is tight, and some things have to go. But in your decisions, prioritize things and have that be at the top of your list. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Gail, and apologies on butchering your last name. All right, next up is Lisa Papard.
I don't correct you, and it's totally fine, it's peppered.
Peppered.
Like salted, peppered, like it's.
Got it. Make sure next time I'll get it.
Not like George Papard.
Got it. Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you.
Of course.
I really wanted to be better organized than I am tonight, but I've been wanting to say this for a while, so I hope that I can get what I want to say across. When the previous board discussed giving the student rep an advisory vote, there was a lot of conversation around what sounded like efforts to protect the student board member from discomfort and criticism. And I'm referencing Mallory's, what Mallory said to you after the resolution. Her speech to you shows that she, she doesn't need your protection. She's clearly doing the work to represent the student body and eloquently informed you of the students' opinions and desires. She's there for a reason and deserves a voice, and I believe, an apology. I don't know Mallory, she doesn't know me, I'm not speaking on her behalf, but I was very proud of her and what she said. I believe you when you say that you're listening to us. I do, like, you're, you're listening. I, I see it. But I don't feel heard, and I know I don't, I don't think you feel heard either. I think we're, we're butting heads. You want people to understand your heart, but, but do you make an effort to understand ours? When you vote to pass a resolution that the vast majority of the people who showed up to comment are opposed to, the message that is sent is that you only want to avoid controversy with your constituents. Did the people who showed up here to speak represent a wide swath of the community? I don't know. Did they represent the prevailing feelings amongst the community? I don't know, but, but neither do you. Your neighborhood and your church are not representative samples. 19 to 1, people came and spoke against that resolution, and now additional voices tonight. You put yourself in an arena that very few choose to enter. And you are elected officials, which means your performance should be evaluated critically. Controversy goes hand in hand with policymaking, there is no avoiding it. But to only listen to your constituents sends a message to everyone that they're not seen, not known, and not valued. I don't have anything else written down. I wrote myself a bunch of notes here, but I guess my request is, for one, to revisit how you guys want Mallory to be a representative of the student body, and whether she gets that advisory vote or not, and to hear back from you in a public, in a, in a meeting, what you're going to do going forward for her, to give her that advisory vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, so, we're moving on to item five, consent items. So I will take a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items as, as set forth.
Have a second.
I'll say.
Thanks, Mike. So we have first and a second. Patty will call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
All right, so, communication follow-up. Dr. Pierce, probably not much, if any.
I do not have anything for communication follow-ups.
Okay, perfect. I will just follow up real quick so we don't have to wait till the next meeting, but the, the actual discussion around the student advisory vote. So we had planned to make that happen going forward, as early as tonight. Unfortunately, Mallory's not here tonight, so, but going forward, she'll have every opportunity to, to make those votes, as it says in our policy and as we want to, want to hear, so. All right, we will move on then to superintendent and board member reports. We will start with Dr. Pierce.
Great. So I just have a couple of things, since we did have spring break last week. There's not a ton, but I wanted to just highlight that you all received an invitation to the upcoming ETP, Action Team for Partnership End of the Year Celebration. It's on May 16th, from 5:30 to 7:00. It's a really great, fun event, so you're all invited, and I hope you can attend. I also was actually going to say a couple of things about policy 1115, which is our student rep representative to the board. Policy because, so, because tonight, Mallory is going to take an advisory vote on, on the action item, on the second step digital materials. And so I just, because we have new board members who weren't here when that policy was passed, I wanted to just talk a little bit about how I work with the student rep, and will make sure I do this, you know, consistently moving forward, to find out from them prior to the meeting if they want to make an advisory vote on something or not. So Mallory and I have a standing meeting, and Annie comes to that meeting, not everyone, but, and we usually meet on the mornings prior to Superintendent Student Advisory Council. And so we check in on that meeting and then also talk about the board meeting. And so, for example, today, we went through the agenda, and, and I highlighted, and of course, she gets the board pocket, too, highlighted that the board will be taking a vote tonight on the second step digital materials. And I asked her, this isn't all kind of spelled out in policy, but this is how we enact the policy. I asked her, do you want to take an advisory vote tonight? And, and she thought about it, and she said, yes, I do. So then I, because we haven't done it in, in a while, emailed Mr. Galbraith and Mallory and just snipped that part of the policy that says, how that works is, right immediately before the board votes on the agenda item, the student representative will be asked to provide the advisory vote, pro, con, or abstain. And so what we had kind of talked about originally in thinking, and London was good when she was here, sitting on the board, providing input about whether, you know, her comfort level. And we're probably going to have different comfort level for each student board member. But if I can check with them ahead of time and just say, do you want to, then we know, and then we can be sure to turn to them and ask for that advisory vote. And if she, if Mallory, for example, had said, you know, I really don't want to weigh on that, weigh in on that, then we don't have to turn to her, and, and she doesn't have to feel weird about saying abstain. So that's what we have in place, and we're going to make sure that that's, you know, followed really consistently moving forward with Mallory, and then with Annie, of course, when Annie steps into the board rep seat. So I was, actually, I was going to say all of this because we were going to have an advisory vote, and then I thought, well, I'm not going to because Mallory's, but since it came up, perfect time to, to talk about it. So that's really my item. But I do want to give Mallory's report, just real quick, on her behalf, since she's not here. So we did have a meeting with the Superintendent Student Advisory Group today, the council, and we talked mostly about communication. And communication in terms of what's working well and what could be improved, in terms of students getting information about academic, you know, opportunities, course-taking, running start, all of those kinds of things that connect to college and career readiness. So I've got some really good input from that group to bring to our first committee meeting. So we now have a board committee on graduation and post-secondary preparation, right? Yep, that's our committee, and so I've got some good input from that group to bring into that meeting. So that was really what our focus was. And then the other thing, just a fun thing, Mallory and Annie are working on a video because we're going to be reminding students of the opportunity to apply for Student Board Representative-elect starting early next week, because those applications are due May 15th. So then students will have about a month to apply for that. And Annie and Mallory are putting together some kind of promotional video to help encourage students to apply, so they worked on that today as well.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Mike?
Nothing for me. I got to have spring break last week as well, so I'm happy, so. It's all good.
Great. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I guess just to respond to a couple of comments. I think, you know, I can appreciate some of the comments about wanting to feel heard. I think it's important that we understand that, yes, I appreciate people coming here and, and making sure that a small vocal minority doesn't constitute the misperception of a majority. And, and I do appreciate people's input. I like hearing what they're saying, and particularly hearing how they're thinking through the problem, because I think there's multiple ways to look at, at any problem. And I think that having an open mind and looking at it. Some people asked questions about why it came to decision that I did on the, on a particular, on the resolution we took about a month ago, because I had answered fairly, I was, I was at work and had limited time to explain my, my decision. Really, the biggest thing for me is local control is imperative. I think the state, whether that be the federal government or the, the state government, as democracy, when it was first described by, by early political philosophers, democracy works best on a local level. The more, the more diluted it becomes, the less control the people actually have. And, and then you have large states creating greater controls on, on human freedom. So I'm a big advocate of, of, of local control. We don't need the state dictating what we do and what we don't. I think it provides us opportunities to, to determine what are the, the needs and desires of this, of this specific area. In addition to that, what I would say is, is also, with regards to the student representative, remember, she's appointed by the board based on, on, on applications. Unfortunately, she doesn't represent the student body. She's not elected by the student body. That might be something people want to look into, I don't know. But because of that, I would be hesitant to say that she speaks for the student body. And if she were elected by the student body, I would say, yeah, she may be a representative of them. But, but she doesn't speak for the student body. She speaks for her opinion, which I think is great. And, and again, her, her ideas and her views. Beyond that, I had a, I had a great, great spring break. Got to spend time with my kids, my wife, my family, and we had an excellent opportunity to just take some time off and review some of the stuff we're going to talk about today.
Great, thank you, sir. Brittany?
So I'm sorry, I, I woke up this morning without my voice. I feel fantastic, but I don't sound like I do, so. And I apologize, I have a cough drop in my mouth, just so I can, so I can talk. I did have a chance, I had a spring break, to do one school visit, so I went and visited Cottonwood Elementary. That was a great visit. Lot of really great things going on there. And actually, it was a very helpful conversation, understanding some of the highly capable programming that we're going to be talking about later in today's meeting. I also took an opportunity, for those who are aware, last school board meeting, a woman named Jan Link came and presented some ideas she has with an organization that she is teamed with, actually, she's the founder of it. It's a tutoring organization, and she has some funding that was bequeathed. that was bequeathed to her. So she was interested to know if Kennewick School District would be interested in partnering with her. So I had a great conversation with her, looking forward to an opportunity to talk with school board members about that. So I don't know if that's a situation where we put it on a board agenda to talk about it, or if we have a subcommittee that meets with Jan. I need a little bit of guidance on how to move forward with next steps with her. But I was impressed enough to take the next step, and see if other board members are interested in what she has to say as well. It's a little bit time-sensitive, because she is going to use this funding to benefit the community of Kennewick somehow. She's reached out to the school district first, but she will look for other opportunities if it doesn't, if we don't take her up on it. So I don't know how to move forward with that. But I did have a meeting with her, and really appreciated what I learned. This is something I should have reported on last school board meeting with my activities, but it's worth staying here. I had the opportunity, leading into March, to work with a team of individuals that works with an organization called Just Serve. And so I worked with them to put together this big nonprofit fair. We had great participation. We had 49 nonprofits that were here, that were at the fair, some of who were Kennewick School District partners. So Communities and Schools was there. I always get the name wrong for the Team Read Foundation, the Columbia River, no, that's not it.
Mid-Columbia Reading Foundation.
Yes, Mid-Columbia Reading Foundation, Children's Reading Foundation of Mid-Columbia. Yeah, they were there. So it was great to see our community partners out in the community, and seeing how they work with other aspects of the community. So really appreciated that. I think that's it. Oh, I wanted to ask for an update, when it's appropriate, on where we are with the mental health grants that have been sent over and forward. If we have a team working on that, where are we given that the deadlines are coming soon? So, yeah.
Okay, so just a couple of things. I think with Jan Link, I know she and I connected, and she was going to email me, and I don't think I have. So if you have her contact information, I can reach back out to her, because I think the next step is, we need, I need to meet with her, with a couple of district folks, and talk through what
What she has in mind.
What her program is and so forth. We actually have a meeting tomorrow. There's a number of us that are meeting to look at the, we got it on the calendar, prior to spring break, to look at the grant opportunities, and some of the information that's been sent to us. And I got that same email about the webinar. I think it might be tomorrow, but, so we are looking into what's possible on those grants, knowing that there's timelines coming up. And then just also, incidentally, Vic and I have a meeting with Benton Franklin Transit tomorrow, because they have reached out to us about partnerships and so forth. And so it wasn't specifically about the issue that was raised during public comment, but we can certainly talk with them about that. So there's meetings, meetings on the books, and things in the works.
All coming together, just the right time. Great. And then just, I had one last thing. Lisa, if you could email your statement over, I'd appreciate it, because I didn't quite, I'm not quite sure I understood your last sentence about, when we only listen to our constituents, dot, dot, dot. I was going to have you repeat it, so I didn't quite catch all that. So if you could send it over to me, I'd love to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. Yeah.
Thank you. Brittany?
Micah?
Yeah, okay. I want to thank, you know, I love, I really appreciate the community members that have solutions, right, rather than just, here's an issue. So I want to just publicly thank Rachel for, LaBelle, for continuing to look and to find opportunities, and I think that's really what we need, you know? And it's, I mean, it's one thing to say, like, you know, you guys are doing something wrong, but it's another thing to say, like, here's a solution that I have. And that's really appreciated, greatly appreciated. I also want to express my appreciation to the curriculum committee. I do believe that they are fantastic, one of the most active caring committees we have. And, you know, and really, our job is to take everything that the committee does, and to look at it through a broader scope. I mean, the committee is very hyper-focused, they should be at least, on what they're looking at. And then we take that information, and we look at even the broader picture, such as finances and other things, right? And then now we're going to take their recommendation, or the recommendation from Mallory, or something. And that's what we're elected to do. We're elected to take information, and then add it to the information that we have, and all the other different places that we're looking at, and talking, people we're talking to, and then that's how we formulate our decision. I just want to go back and double back and reiterate, again, on that policy that we didn't vote on. Again, for me, it was also mostly about, it was primarily, it was other things too, but mostly it was about local control. That was a big factor, is the state mandated something to us, and then not provided funding. And we're in a shortfall anyway. So it's like, okay, here's one more thing you guys have to do, and just figure out how to do it, and figure out how to pay for it yourselves, and we're not going to help you. And, you know, that takes a lot of resources to add in new, anytime you add in new curriculum, new things, it just takes resources. And the state's not just giving you mandates of things to do without funding, that's a problem. So that was kind of, there's other reasons, but that was a primary, and I'm happy to speak offline about that more. The spring break, went to Iceland with Gabe, actually, and our family, our two, our wives and I, we had a great time, visited some schools in Iceland, and that was actually really fun. Got to travel, just, it was a great, great time. I appreciate all of you also sticking around to listen as you guys speak, and that we can respond to things, and we can have our moments. I appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, so I enjoy, just enjoyed spring break, getting ready to start up, hopefully a handful of school visits now that we're past spring break. And so I'll get out there on some Fridays, and visit some schools. I do want to take a quick second to assure the community, as it was insinuated on social media, the school district did not pay for our trip to Iceland. That was a personal trip. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that Kennewick School District did not pay for our trip to Iceland. So I want to make sure that's very clear. So I'm looking forward to the rest of the school year. I'm getting excited for graduation. That's probably one of my favorite times of the year, for sure, handing out those diplomas. So looking forward to that. So with that, we will move into our reports and discussions. First up will be Vic Roberts, 2024-25 preliminary budget. Thank you, Vic.
We just saved a lot of money not paying for that Iceland trip.
Yeah. We were going to send you the bill, but then...
Yeah. Well, we don't even, you don't even know how much you spent, because it's, I don't even know, it just converts automatically, I guess, so. I did show my kids the tag, it said $10,000 something on it for a school bag, but it's like $60 or something.
All right, we're getting back to the general fund. We kind of held off the last meeting or two, but got to get back to it, and start here with the goals. So some accountability here. We're doing some discussion, not really any decisions, but discussion, maybe some input, and fiscal oversight. So here we go. So then legislative session ended March 7th. These are the final numbers, the cost of living adjustment, 3.7%, so that gets passed through to our employees. And then some medical insurance, that went up a little bit. You'll see some of those increases on some of the slides. And then the M-SOC, material supply operating cost. So they did adjust a little bit this year, and then for next year, 1.9%. But as you're aware, that's just not cutting it, so they'll keep working on that over there at the state next year. And then there were some adjustments to the prototypical model, but I don't really have those yet. They were to some para and office staff time. We'll know more on the 15th, when the state updates their funding model. So just a reminder, this is where we're starting out. 16 million, we got to make that up, so we got to get that down as much as we can. And then over here, when we add the ASR money, it's only about 6 million. So this fund balance, with the 6 million, you know, using ASR and things, it's 40 million. But we expect to have at least 46 million, and hopefully, you know, working on getting it even higher by managing the budget, and using ASR in certain ways. And if we can get this up to 50 million, that would really help. But we'll know more on that next couple of months. So you see a lot of districts out there. I don't know if you get all this stuff, they're cutting a lot, millions of dollars. And once you get the fund balance down to, say, 15 million or something, 10 million, that's where you see like a Yakima, they can't, they just don't have enough money, so they got to cut a lot more, about 10 times more than us. But, you know, we got a little more fund balance, but that's not to say we're in the best shape. Mrs. Hane taught my students, or my kids, in math, but the budget's much, much worse than tight, just to clarify. So we're going to look through the revenue. This is going to impact the change in that 16 million. So basic ed enrollment, so CTE, actually, there's a typo there, CTE increases, enrollment decreases. So there's a bit of an offset. If our enrollment goes down, which it has been, and maybe 100 kids, so that's maybe a million dollars. But then if we had a CTE program, CTE grows, say, 30 kids or 40 kids, they come out of basic ed, and that's what happened this year. So that's another $300,000 or $400,000 that goes to the CTE program. So we can't take that money, it goes away. So CTE's always coming to me and asking, you know, can we add another program, can we do this and that? And it's always difficult, because you want to serve the kids, and have those programs. But if 30 kids go out of basic ed and into CTE, they come out of math, they come out of different art, and different things, you can't, I always say, well, go find the basic ed teacher. And that's a little hard to do, because they come out of everywhere. But next year, we are going to add another ag teacher, 1.0, shared a little bit at Kennewick High, and some at Kamaiak. But CTE has taken some of their other classes that are low enrollment, and closed those, and then added the ag. So it works out a lot better. So we're not losing way as much money out of basic ed. It would actually go up more if they were just adding ag without reducing some of their other classes. So this change here is really from 24-25. Special ed enrollment, so the enrollment went up, the money goes up, and there's some factors, the cost of living, some of that goes on this money. So it should be around 1.9 million. And like I said, we won't, these numbers get firmed up when the state updates their formula. Transportation funding, so we're getting 900,000 more this year than we projected, and we'll roll that over next year. Normally, we just use the money we get this year to make sure we're not overestimating. There has been years ago where we did overestimate, and it actually came in lower. So that was, you know, we're just trying to be a little safer on that. The inflationary formula, 3.7, 3.3 million from the state. There's benefit costs on that money, you know, retirement, FICA, all that, so that's another million. And then here's the medical insurance, that's what we get from the state, 1.3 million. The M-SOC money, 24.7 million to 25.5, about 750,000. And then there's SEL money, this is phased in the last year, will be 24-25, the third phase in, 950,000. So we do comply with that, with that money. So when you get that money, you have to have so many counselors, nurses, security, safety, there's a wide scope of employees that you're supposed to have hired to meet their compliance factor. So they might say, next year, you need 95 FTE, and all these categories, you know, they're just a total. We have more than 95. So we will get all that money. Prototypical formula adjustment, that's what I said about the paras, and some office staff, I don't quite have that number. And that is the number that the state says, well, you get that money, you have to either use it to, you know, close your deficit, or if you don't have a deficit, you have to give raises. So there'll be more on that. But we sort of do have a deficit, so we'll see how that goes. Property tax, so 12.5 million, we're only getting part of the year, since it just came on in 2024. The full year, 23.2, so that's the big amount of money that we'll have coming in as an increase. Talked about levy equalization, and there's the numbers there. We budgeted 10.4, could get 9.57 this year. And so the budget's 10.4. Next year, we're going to get 12 million, because we have our full levy, 1.3 million, which is a lot lower than we expected, but that's the increase. So that's $20.8 million of new revenue. And then looking at the staff costs, non-staff costs, and we're talking about basic ed, local funding. So we had a few of these numbers back in the earlier March meeting. So we've had some staff during this year, and some contract, different language, and things that resulted in about over a million dollars of cost, you know, things we've added that we had to add, and such. And then some of the reductions, certificate and staff, we're looking at 17 positions at the elementary level. So that's about 1.5 million. We don't have the final numbers on all these. Middle school, high school, eight positions, I think it's five or six at the middle school, and three or four at the high school level. Alternative programs, other programs, about three positions there. And there are some staffing that we need to add, and working at some paras, the special ed enrollment continues to increase. There's contract language.
Sorry, Vic, I just want to chime in at this point real briefly, because I know that people might be reading the articles that are coming out in the Tri-City Herald. And there was one just recently about, it was focusing on districts like Yakima, and other districts across the state that are having to cut positions. I think that what I read in the paper about Yakima, it was like over 100 positions or something. And I just want, you know, we have sat down with the Herald, and given them information, and they reached out, and we said, we will give you more, you know, concrete information as we have it. But I just want to make sure, as we talk about reducing, we are net, we also had a boundary adjustment, right? So we've got some buildings, if you take some buildings, because of the boundary adjustment, we have to add positions at one building, because that building's getting bigger, and we have to reduce positions at another building, because that enrollment's getting smaller because of the boundary adjustment. We also have to right-size staffing based on enrollment. So this doesn't, this doesn't really mean we're laying off, or riffing that amount of positions, because every year, we've got retirements and resignations. So we're just going through the process right now of kind of matching all of that up. But as I read that article in the paper, I felt it made it sound like we were, you know, laying off X amount of positions, or whatever. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that this is not that, because there's attrition, this is a natural thing that happens every year, and we've got the boundary adjustment as well in the mix.
Yeah, it's a pretty consistent thing with the Tri-City Herald, it's just constant, like, this is, it's like always, they're just like always off to the mark, you know what I mean? And they're never, it seems like they're very seldom actually report the proper, correct things. Maybe we should just, like, not talk to them so much, because it's just like, it just stirs up issues in the community that...
Well, yeah, sometimes. We try to work with them.
But the thing is, the thing is, is the article regarding this did stir up conversation amongst our teacher group. I heard it from multiple teachers. And again, it is a little irresponsible to report layoffs versus the actual way we're doing reductions. So, but thank you for clarifying that, so people don't think we're out here getting rid of 262 staff members like Vancouver Public School District is, so.
Well, I think, I think to the point, though, first of all, Vic, thank you for helping to keep us in a position where we don't have to do this. I mean, you can see, these other school districts are in positions where they're having to make very aggressive cuts. And it's frustrating for everybody involved, I'm sure. And I appreciate the fact that Tracy, or Dr. Pierce, Vic, you guys have helped us steer this, and hopefully, that's what we can continue to do. Again, we're not trying to be, we understand that all these programs are important, and we'd love to do everything. But unfortunately, we need to make sure that we don't get ourselves into positions where we do have to do exactly what some of these other districts are having to do, make massive layoffs. Right now, we can use natural attrition, and just not hire new positions. So no one has to get fired, or laid off, or however you want to say it. Instead, we can use the natural attrition. And so thank you, too, for helping to maintain us, so at least we're in a position, these are tough economic times for everybody, you can see that, but we're in a position, not great, but we can still hopefully continue without having to be drastic. So thank you.
Yeah, good comments there. Thanks for bringing that up, Dr. Pierce. You have the vacancies. I mean, we're down in HR all the time, seeing how many retirements we have, so, you know, looking at some of these numbers with the elementary staff. So, you know, there's a ratio, it's called a K3 ratio, where you have to have a certain class size to get an amount of money. And next year, we'll still have room to probably reduce some more at elementary. It's just right now, with the boundary changes and stuff, it would be too much, given we don't know where these schools are going to end up with their enrollment. But there is still going to be low class sizes, and probably a lot left. So keep that in mind. So then, moving down here, special ed, like I said, special education enrollment goes up, there's contract language, when a class size gets a certain level, you've got to add a para. So we're looking at that, could be around this number, maybe lower or higher. And then we don't plan on any other... And then we don't plan on any other operations, maintenance staffing, nothing there that we're doing. And then some of the inflationary adjustments, you saw what we get from the state, and here's what we have to pay, which is a lot more. 7.4 million here, employee paid benefit cost, 1.3. Medical increase, 1.9. I think we said we're going to get 1.3 from the state. And then we have our classified pools. This is where we pay subs, coaches, all sorts of different buckets of pay. And I put a few of them down here just to give you an idea. Here's extracurricular and coaching, going from 3.46 to 3.82 million dollar budget, 360,000. So some of that is cost of living on those contracts. Some of it is some bargain positions, assistance at volleyball. I think last summer we bargained a few others. And to give you an idea of extended season playoffs, so last year through March, I think we paid 30,000 or so for the playoffs. If you go to playoffs, you get money through the contract. You know, people are spending more time there, doing things. So 30,000 versus now, this year, 90,000. So a lot more, all those people coming through, you're congratulating, that's, yeah, cost a little money too. So some of those teams are getting better, so that's the money there. And then there's contracts for buildings. All have department leads, chairmans, things like that. So it's a big chunk there. Leave cash out, that's huge. You know, the state doesn't pay for that. Sick, personal vacation leaves. Luckily, we got, look like we're doing pretty good there on that budget. And then the certificated credits, masters. I say how people can move through the scale and get their masters. It's happened a lot more often than it had in the past. This is just a little amount, 600,000. There's more budget in some other, some other spots in the salary budget. But generally, it's got to be about a million, 800,000 to a million dollars a year for just those increases in cost. So you get down here, that's 10.5 million increase in cost. And then there's some, the non-basic ed, the material supply operating cost. We've talked a little bit about that, 1.7 million there. And then the overhead rate, what we charge some of those programs, you know, CTE and title programs, that rate's dropped down a little bit, and mostly that's due to ESAR. When we move some cost into ESAR, we can't use those costs for our overhead rate. They look at the prior year, and so that went down. We expect it to go up as ESAR money's gone and we put those costs back. But that could be about $500,000 of, that we can't really charge those programs. So that's about 12.7 million. And the difference there is about 8.1 million. So that 8.1 would bring the $16 million down to about 8, 7.9 million. And this is that non-staff cost of 1.7 million. Touched on a few of these utility costs. There's some curriculum stuff we just, oh, I mean, there's going to be licenses and things that we have to pay. Same thing with IT, technology, special education. There's some contracts for services where, you know, there's a lot of different types of services, whether it's extra SLP, psych, legal, some programs there we send special ed students to. So it's, it's hard to not, you know, take care of that. On special education and transportation, both those programs, to give you an idea, we only get the money if we spend the money. So transportation, we get 10, 10.9, 11 million dollars. And we have to spend all the money to get that. So next year, if they say, well, your formula says you get 12 million dollars and we only spent 11.9, we don't get $100,000. So it's kind of a backward system. And a lot of times, I'm between a rock and a hard place. Yeah, do we want to spend that? Well, I don't really think we need to on transportation. But gee, if it means we're going to have, we can get our money, then yeah, maybe we will try to do some bigger repairs and things like that. Special education, you can only get safety net money if you spend your money. So safety net money is something we apply for, for high-cost kids. And if we don't have enough costs, we can't get that money. So on one hand, I'm like, yeah, we don't, we don't need to buy that. But the states, they're not going to reward us for being efficient. It's one of the problems that even, I mean, transportation, you can get extra money for special ed students, you know, for their transportation. We don't spend enough money to qualify. Where other districts, I can tell, they're way more, they're way inefficient on how they're doing their buses. You know, April said how, how she makes the routes and stuff. If another district's not doing that, well, they can go grab some extra safety net, special ed money or whatever it is. But it's just one of those things, the state you have to deal with and, you know, try not to get too upset about, I guess. So, so let's get into a few of the contractual-related services, part of those, those MSOC costs. And I know we have some new board members just want to be aware of these programs, ready for kindergarten. It's been a partnership for years, serves a lot of parents with their kids. And the annual cost is about 270,000. The past couple of years, we've worked with them to say, you know, we're in a bit of a budget situation. You know, we don't plan on increasing things. You know, we've tweaked it a little bit, maybe 5, 10,000 here or there. But we're going to meet with them at the end of April, and it's probably going to be that same type of conversation. Team Read, same thing. Although we did add Amistad, I believe, effective this year. And that's usually about 15,000 a school. I'm not aware of any schools. When we talk to the Team Read, we'll get a little better idea on that. It's really, you know, kind of a collaboration with the principal and Team Read and teachers and things to see if they can do that. The ESD, we do have a student assistance, it's supposed to say assistance, I think, services. And that's for substance abuse and some mental health. So it costs about almost $200,000 a year. So they get grant money. I think we get maybe about three employees out of that deal. And they serve middle school and high school. Actually, the person that's been talking, Rachel, when she mentioned some of the names, they are from this program, that they were serving those kids.
Vic, really quick on the next couple. When it says program's cost to district is offset by a grant or fund, or does that mean that the 185 to 200,000 from local funding is offset? So we're really not paying anything?
No, we're paying the 100, we're paying the 105 to 200. They're getting a grant, otherwise it costs 300,000 or 400,000.
Okay, so part of the cost is, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Communities and schools, where are that? 11 schools, they do get a grant, you know, but it does cost us 660,000. If we didn't have that grant, it'd probably be quite a bit more. 60,000 per school is a pretty good deal to get a full-time person in there. As you can see what we pay, you know, it's probably equal or more. And that's another, I think we have another two years that we can keep doing that contract. And then this one's, I didn't put this on there, I'd forgot it, but the City of Kennewick contract, it's been going on for quite a while. We've added some other schools, middle school. This year, we added all the, two more middle schools, I think, two or three. It looks like Desert Hills, Shinnick Horse Heaven. They just started in January. Cost this year 635,000. So next year will be a full year, 735,000. And that contract goes up 5% to 7% a year based on, you know, whatever the city's doing with, you know, wages and benefits.
Vic, before you move on, can I ask a couple of questions? So I'm not sure, I don't understand with ESD, is that a longstanding relationship? Is that something that we've elected to do? Is it something that the state requires us to have ESD assistance? How did, how did that relationship come about?
Yeah, so I think it was probably, yeah, back 2008. I think they had a grant and they said, hey, we can part with you. We got this grant, we want to do some. Back then, it was probably more mental health. Now it's turned into mental health, substance abuse. And it probably started out, you know, a little smaller, probably 20, 30,000. But then about 17, 15, 16, 17, they got more grant money and it went up to about 150 to 200,000, our cost, but we got a lot more services. I wasn't, you know, the superintendent's deal with the ESD at that time, and I remember them coming to me, hey, the ESD has this program. We can get some people on our schools. And, you know, that's how it started. I don't know, I think that's, other people are gone that worked with it.
Yeah, I just have lots of questions about, you know, we're looking at mental health services.
Yeah, and so when we, I mean, Dr. Pierce, we can get some more information from you. There's a contract, they're in certain schools, maybe two or three days a week at certain schools, and they kind of rotate around. Some of them have one school. I don't have all that information.
Just to interject real quick.
We have some summary data too that we have on their services.
Yeah, so one thing, that's what we're, one thing we're going to talk about in our meeting tomorrow is compiling some of this data so we can share it with the board. Because we do have, you know, we did add the mental health therapists with the ESAR dollars, right? Just like we added the varsity tutoring with ESAR dollars. But prior to that, and still continuing, we have mental health supports in some of these different areas. That's a great example that Vic's providing here. We also have migrant mental health specialists. So I just want to make sure that the board has the big, the big picture of all of the people that we do have. We have social workers, that's, community is in schools, they're social workers. So just kind of giving the whole big picture of what is currently in place.
Social workers, they're certified, the CIS?
Correct.
Student support people are all certified, yes?
Well, I don't want to overstate and say everyone is, but many. No, some are social work, like certified social workers.
Is there any way we could, when you're compiling all that, I think what would probably be helpful is to see utilization as well within each one of these programs. So we can get an idea of, for example, how, how much utilization there is on the student assistance services, how much utilization there is with even the counselors that we got with the ESAR money. What is their utilization? Because if we can shift things around and, you know, put it to where it's being used the most, that might be advantageous.
Yeah, we have some of that data.
And I suspect you'll need to do a lot of that for applying for the grants anyway. You'll need to demonstrate what we're already doing and where the need is.
Vic, can you, can you just really quick with each of these, can you just tell us how much we're paying for them out of, like, our, our funding? So ready for kindergarten, is that, we're paying 270,000 out of our budget?
Yeah, Team Read, 115,000, we're paying that. ESD, this year, it's 200,000. They have a cute couple of smaller grants there that we did. Communities and schools, 660,000. And City of Kennewick, it's currently 635. They only had halftime it for a little bit. It's going to be 735,000 next year.
What was the, the ready for kindergarten? What was that again?
And I wasn't quite sure I understood the funding structure for communities and schools. Because have you already talked about the Learning Assistance Program, high poverty funding?
So that, that's how it's funded with our, with this money.
So as I've gone to schools, you know, some, some of the schools will say, well, we have title money, is that?
Title money is federal money.
Is the LAPH?
No, no.
Different funding.
Yeah, we'll go into that. Actually, another slide has some of that on there.
Okay, so, because I just, I didn't understand that we have 11, because isn't communities and schools in more than 11 schools?
I think it's 11. I lose track too, it's 11.
11 with three more possible.
But some of the funding for those 11 schools is covered by the Learning Assistance Program?
No, 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 no. So the CIS goes and gets the other money. So right now, it's 660,000, it costs 60,000 a school. But it's pretty much, if CIS didn't have their grant money, it costs a lot more. So they're saying, CIS says, well, you know, we got this grant, we can do it for 60,000. And we say, yeah, well, that's, you know...
They're doing the work to get the additional.
Yeah, they do the work to get the additional money.
Somewhere along the line, I was given the impression that the schools could choose how to use that funding.
Okay.
And that they either choose communities and schools or they don't.
Yeah, so that's what they're learning assist, that's what the money they get from the district. So if I'm a school and I get learning assistance, LAP, high poverty money, I might get $100,000 at my school. They elect whether they want to do CIS or they want to hire an instructional coach, or they want to hire para educators, or they want to hire MTSS somebody.
Do we have a...
Behavior type things.
Do we have a situation in the district where a school has said, I'm going to hire an instructional coach, but I'd also really love to have communities and schools? I'm sure that everyone would love that.
They would say that, and we would sit down with them and say, here's your money. We would try to make it work. We try to work for the school and say, you know, maybe we can make this work. Maybe we can move some stuff around and make it work. And we've done that. But sometimes it just, it's like, I know, you either have to get rid of this to have this. You know, that's...
So to be clear, 660 is coming out of our budget?
Yes.
Regardless of everything else, all of the other grants?
Yes.
And so, so that, that's the money that, that we are paying. And each school then may get additional. If they go after these grants for these other, other income areas, they may have other income coming in that they can use.
So a school that gets learning assistance, not all schools get that. The ones that get the learning assistance, high poverty, also get title money. Because they're in a certain poverty level. So they have a little more flexibility.
So they come in with that, and that can, that, that has stipulations on how it can be used.
Yes.
But that is not included in the 6...
It's not included in the 660. So I'll get to another slide and then explain a little bit.
Can I ask one more question? So, hold on, it's, it's one of those questions that's on, it keeps coming in and out of my mind. Okay, it was what you were saying. Okay, so regardless, we are going to be spending 660,000 for Learning Assistance Program, high poverty. It's just that the schools are electing to put that towards CIS? I guess I want to understand a little bit better.
The high poverty schools elect to put that funding to CIS.
So if a school said, I'm not interested in communities and schools, we would still be paying that school the LAP, high poverty funding?
Yes, they still get that money.
Okay. And we have to remember the importance of the different pots of funding. Because you, you can't, you, we can't, it's supplement versus supplant. So we couldn't say, oh, hey, let's take that money and use it for like a basic ed reason because the money is specifically to supplement what's already in, in place. Or we could say, oh, hey, let's charge somebody's half of their salary to that if they were like a basic ed person. So this is like additional money, federal or state money, that's coming to support students in poverty. You know, it goes to specific schools and it can be used for real specific purposes. So it can't be like taken and used for something else.
So if you were going to say, well, they're not going to do the CIS, that money still has to go somewhere, and it's specific to various things that LAP or, you know, have to kind of qualify for. The CIS-type services, they fit under, under those, the scope that you can use that money for. Yeah, so we can, any more questions here? That's great.
Are you going back to the slide from before? I just didn't understand, what is allowed overhead rate? What is that?
So say on the LAP funding, say we get $10 million and the rate says 4 whatever. So we get $480,000 for like all my time that I spend with them to figure out if they can do CIS, right? And every, you know, payroll.
Okay, so it just puts the cash on, okay.
So now that's going down. So instead of 480,000, then we can take off that LAP funding. Now it's going to be like 280,000. So we got to figure out, how do we get that from some other program that's not under those rules, right? We won't go into that right now, but... Okay, so good on that, right? Okay, so we'll get back to a little more on some of that LAP stuff a little bit. So now getting to some number stuff here. And so here's that 16 million that we got to try to get down. So here's the 20.8 million of new revenue, right? And then here's the 12.7 million of additional cost. So that comes down here, now we're at 7.9, almost 8 million. So this is a lot better than two or three weeks ago, and I wouldn't talk about this because it was worse. So we're trying to work on it and going to go through some things here. So enrollment, you can see here going out, did some projections, you know, and it's about 170 kids. That's a decrease of 170 kids a year. I did have a chart here, I think Josh was asking for, and he can take this home and try to figure it out because I keep going back to it. But generally, you see the kindergarten is down, and that's why the K5 keeps going down. The sixth and eighth and the ninth through 12th, not quite as bad because these haven't hit there yet, you know, these got to go through the cycle. Six and, six through middle school and high school, they're still getting some of these numbers, you know, they're a little higher. So these ones start going down until out further. But hopefully, you know, '24, '25, we see kindergarten being above 1180. You know, if you can get 50 to 100 more kindergarten in this, that's really going to help, you know, get the numbers back a little bit. So anyway, that's what, you know, and they're just projections. I mean, we know about how many new kids we get, you know, first to second, second to third. You know, some of it's only like 10 kids, and you can see the differences here. Some grade levels, we don't seem to get a lot. That's people moving into the area and looking at the past history. The years in COVID though, it's really hard to use those numbers because then we got kids back and look like we grew by, you know, 40 kids at a grade level, and that's just kids that were home, so. So going back, that's where these numbers come from, some estimates. I mean, I kind of lowered it out here hoping things would look better, but these are the main ones you need to be concerned about. Here's the special education, you know, we should, you know, we grow quite a bit. This says 40 kids, so this probably should be better. Transportation funding, this should probably be a little better out here also, but here's this year. And then the SCL phase in is going to be done, so we're just going to get a little inflation on that. And with that money, we did add three counselors, you know, this year with that money. We already had met that compliance, but we elected to add some more counselors anyway. And then here's the IMSA state funding. So if they increase that in the out years, maybe it should be more than 500,000, but right now they're only doing like 2% a year. And then property taxes, a big increase, but then it only goes up a little bit. We're going from 23, 24 million, you know, increasing about a million or so a year. Levy equalization, hopefully these numbers will be better, but this, as the property values go up, we're going to continue to lose levy equalization as we have discussed. And then the state inflation factors, this is 2% out here, could be higher, and those numbers will change. So a few things in here, you know, hopefully worst case scenario, we'll just have to wait and see. The property taxes here, this is only $2. And as we look down here at these numbers, that's still not enough, but that's probably, you know, 50 to 60 cent increase is still a lot. And, you know, it's going to be a tough road if we, we got to do more than that. So just kind of keeping that in mind and see how these numbers look. And down here, here's the numbers we talked about for the cost, the cost of wages. We went over that slide, these are done a little differently, just kind of rolled up into some numbers there. There's the overhead, the IMSA. But then next year, I mean, there's going to have to be another $2 to $3 million. They're talking about the elementary, class size is still going to be low, there's still going to be some staff left there. But then we're going to have to start getting into some non-teaching staff. You know, some of those schools, if they're down below 400, you have to be looking at some of the support staff. You know, we got schools going to be 650 and schools 380 to have the same number of staff in the office. So you've read about other school districts, and you know what I'm talking about. So that's next year, enrollment might change, things might look better, but it's going to have to be some money there. It's going to have to be, going to have to be got at. So then down here, 7.9 million, these numbers will change, hopefully to the better, and we'll get this a little lower. Here's the 46 million. I mentioned if we could get this to 50 million, that adds 5 million down here to this fund balance. Goes to 43, goes up to 32, and so on. And these numbers are too low out here, even with this levy up here. Like I said, these numbers could change and get better. You know, if we could get 5 million, 2 million, this gets these numbers a little more realistic. But at this point, you know, we're doing what we can. It's really difficult to get the 17, the eight or nine at the middle of high school. You know, to do more than that, some of those districts, it is a lot of work, and it's a lot of stress. And you're just, you know, getting rid of people's jobs.
Vic, do your projected levy, are your levy projections enough to get us our full LAP funding?
LEA funding?
Or LEA funding?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and so that's built in?
You've got to be over $1.50 to get your full funding. So speaking of that, so I met with a guy, he's from DA Davidson, he helps school districts when they do bonds and things. And, you know, he knows the levy equalization, he's tried to do some legislation. And I just met with him yesterday, he said there's, you know, there's 30 to 35 districts that are below $1.50. So that means they're not getting all their LEA. You know, and he knows about the property assessed values and all that. He was asking me about, you know, any legislatures, and of course, I mentioned one that we kind of are aware of. And we could try to get in some others. We just have to get legislatures in the areas of the state where they're having this problem. So when you go over to Seattle area, their thing is they want the $2.50 raise so they can get more money. They don't get any LEA, but a lot of districts are at 250, and they say we need more money. You know, so whether they do or not, it's, I don't know, but. So that's what he's fighting against there, you know, you have certain legislatures like, you know, we don't care about that, they're talking about raising 250. So anyway, we'll keep working with him and try to get him a few other legislatures. And, you know, he was talking about some thresholds, some protection, hold harmless. You know, if something comes in here big, you know, a wind farm or something, we're going to lose a lot of money, so. So any more, any questions on this? I know there's quite a bit here, and this is just your basic ed local funding. And we got to do a little better here, and we're going to keep working through it. The next meeting we'll have some more information. Hopefully things look a little better.
So just bottom line here, based on your projections, we run out of money in 2020, 2030 essentially. We run out of money if things keep going as they're going.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if they, like I said, this worst case scenario.
Okay, well, so first off, I'm going to, so Brittany, Josh, Vic is not an optimist. Let's start there.
It's true.
So he is, this is, you know, death and despair, just so, just so we're square. So number two.
Probably should be worse, yeah.
Exactly, which is fun. No, and we need to look at worst case scenarios. What we don't know, and this is one thing that everyone here needs to understand, is when we look at what's going on with Yakima, all these other areas, this type of school funding is going to come back to the forefront here in the next legislative session. It's just going to happen, because just like the article we saw, that type of stuff, that traction is going to happen. Educational funding is going to come back to the forefront here to the legislature next year. You're going to have, I mean, everyone has been already mumbling about, you know, McCleary 2.0, and it's, someone's going to sue. Someone, and so the entire school funding, I truly believe is going to have to be looked at again. And Tracy, please jump in.
No, you're absolutely right. As I said at the last meeting, it's broken.
It's broken.
The system is broken.
And so, and so all of these things, you know, Vic, by law has to give us these projections out five years. Is it five years or seven years?
We have to do four.
Four, okay, four years.
For the budget, yeah.
So he has to present this to us. We see how many times it changes in one year, you know, just wait till what's going to happen in four years. This is all.
Yeah, and the next meeting, I'll kind of go into some more details on, you know, if this is 7.9 million, you know, what does Vic think that's going to end up like? So I don't want to, you know, we could reduce a lot more here, but you need to know what it takes to run the district. So he's never going to stay in there. Can we imagine him not fill positions and not spend money and get this down? But this is what it could look like on paper, yeah. But I can't really find $10 million, you know, like that. But, you know, I understand what Mike's saying, and we'll get to some of that the next board meeting. And like this deficit here, 6 million, and I told the board that we could make that up when we did the budget. And we're going to make it up, and we're trying hard.
I guess my point in pointing that out is, is yes, these are, we don't know the future. And anytime you're doing any kind of spreadsheet like that, it's a lot of guessing. But I, I think, the point I think we need to be in, keeping in mind is, we don't know the future. So we need to be very careful about what we do, because what we don't want to do is, we don't want to find ourselves in the position that some of these other school districts are in because they said, well, it'll change in the future. We can keep going on the track we're going. It'll change, it'll change, it'll change, and it didn't. And so we need to make sure that we stay ahead of the curve. You're right, things will change. We just need to make sure that we're not, we're not at the forefront of people getting, running out of money.
At no point was I recommending that we just keep doing what we're doing. What I'm saying is that there's a tremendous amount we don't know. And this will change. There's no two ways about it. But again, I truly believe you're going to see a dramatic shift in funding here in the next, you know, 24 months.
And we're. We have to stay ahead of the people.
Absolutely.
Make sure that we're not one of the people that are not money first.
No, we don't want to be this.
The one thing on this sheet though, you have to be aware of, this is counting on a levy that's increased quite a bit.
That was the point I was just going to make. So we, we have to be efficient, we have to be budget conscious, we have to be good stewards of taxpayer money. Because in two years, we're going to be going back to the taxpayer saying, look at what we did these last two years. We need your help, and we need a significant increase to fund this district and make it run. So if you like the things we're doing, we need your help. And that's something we can do and control.
We tried to use our ESSR money, actually tried to work it so we have it another year basically in this fund balance. And that kind of helped the taxpayer, you know, as we lowered those rates. So anyway, we'll update this next time.
Just two more points I want to hit on is, you know, some of the districts, I think, that we're reading about, and I don't know all the ins and outs of their finances, but in meetings that I've been on with other superintendents across the state and, you know, some of our associations like WSA and so forth, you know, the ESSR funding, one area of, you know, sort of trouble for people is when they use that ESSR funding for ongoing, to fund ongoing regular expenses versus want, knowing like, hey, this is a one-time, short-term thing that we're doing, and it's not going to be an, you know, go expense like with district staff. And so we were really mindful of that. And then having a healthy fund balance, I mean, sometimes people look at a fund balance and go, oh, gosh, that just seems like excessive that you would have $50 million or whatever. But having such a healthy fund balance helped us withstand a double levy failure. And in addition to, I mean, so some of these districts didn't fail a levy or double fail a levy that are in more of the financial, you know, dire straits. So I just, you know, that's really important too, because in the healthy times, you don't want to be looking at that fund balance saying, oh, gosh, why are we sitting on all of this money and not spending it? The reality is you have to have it because the budgets are cyclical and legislature's cyclical too. And so there's going to be good times and bad times, and if you don't have the healthy fund balance, you're not, you're going to have it way worse than we do, so.
And that's Marysville you read about, they don't have enough fund balance, and they can't. You can balance your budget with fund balance, but once you don't have that, that's where these districts, it's like, okay, oops, we don't, what happened? We don't have it. And it's, that's why you want to look out four or five years and kind of really see what's going on, or at least a year or two. So, okay, moving on to the next slide. So this one is the slide that actually, it's the same number down here, 7.9, but it's all the revenue. So it's 3.314 million versus 322 million in costs. You get to the same number. The other slide just takes the increases in the revenue and the expenditures. So this will, this will change, because we're going to put in all the federal state revenue, the increase is there. And there's going to be increases in the salary and benefits for those federal and LAP funded type positions. But it's not really going to change this number much because those, that program money stays with the program. So that's why we focus mainly on the basic ed, the local funded. So we'll get this updated. It might be a little, little longer for that. We're working on the federal and LAP right now, and that's presenting some challenges also. So you can see, here's the different money, and Brittany, you mentioned some of these, we'll kind of go over them. So Title I, we had a big increase in '21, '22. At that time, we were like, that's kind of strange, they gave us so much more money. And so now we're getting a decrease every year. Because we don't meet the census thresholds to maintain that money, we can only get 85% of the prior year in certain categories. So it's basically going down 500,000 a year. Because, you know, you might have to have 15% of this poverty level, we only have 12. It's, oh, well, you only get 85% of this certain amount. And as long as we keep under 15%, we're going to keep losing, you know, the 85%, we're going to keep losing 15%. So that's an issue. I mean, we didn't spend all this increase that we had, but it is creating some problems.
Really quick, Vic, how will changing the school boundaries affect this? Have we looked at that?
It won't affect it.
Doesn't affect the Title I funding at all?
No, it's a good question. Title I, we've looked at that when we did the boundaries, it shouldn't affect any of that. The LAP program, that's another one where it's based on poverty. So, you know, you move kids in that school, basically their poverty could change and they'd lose a lot of money.
So none of the changes should affect any of our?
Yeah, we don't, when we looked at it, we don't expect it to. When some of these schools went to CEP, that, you know, everybody eats for free, they're grandfathered in. So there's a few on the cusp, but since they're already grandfathered in, when we did CEP, it did some things to poverty. So anyway, here's the LAP funding, the base LAP funding. It says, let's see here, did I see how many, how many schools get title, right up here, yeah. 24 schools get title money. The ones that have the highest poverty get, you know, way more money than the ones. We have schools getting $600,000, $700,000 versus some, we try to get maybe $50,000 so they can hire, you know, paras and some few things.
I noticed that we had, from '21 to '22, you see a big jump. So is that partially why we didn't get that funding? Is it because the percentages went down because it was dispersed between more schools, or?
No, it's not. It was nothing to do with that. And we got that money, we could dip down and offer some title money to some other schools, like smaller amounts. But it did not affect that. It's all based on census.
Got it.
LAP funding, so that goes up every year. If your enrollment goes up, it's tied to enrollment. It's tied to the inflation factor the state gives, so that's why that has jumped up a little bit every year. But there's a lot of staff funded out of that, so most of that money just goes to continue to fund those staff. And here's the LAP High Poverty Funding, you can see the number of schools. So that's the money you're talking about, Brittany, and that's where a school, that's where the CIS money comes from out of this pot. Get those schools elected to CIS. And then bilingual money, that did go up quite a bit this year based on the number of students. But we didn't, we still expect 4.9 million, and it's not creating a whole lot of problems there. We're still going to budget about a little lower amount. So the money up here, Title and LAP, we kind of try to use all that together. So even if this money drops, we try to move things around to, you know, keep staff and keep things whole. But with this decrease of 500,000 every year, that's getting very difficult. You know, a school up here, they're going to lose some title money, maybe $50,000, $100,000. Can we move things around to get it, you know, do we have some LAP capacity to move it around? Keep those positions, keep that support for students. With the decrease every year of this, it's getting difficult. We expect '25, '26, there'll be some reductions probably in LAP and Title. You know, there's paras there, there's instructional coaches, things like that. It's going to be tough in '25, '26 to continue to fund everything we're funding out of there. So looking at that, say in '25, '26, we said, well, we have room, we're going to have to probably reduce 10 to 15 more staff, teaching staff at, say, elementary or middle school. And then you say, well, we need to reduce another maybe five or 10 out of this funding. So that five to 10, they're owed a job back in basic ed, right? So we got, we say we want to reduce 10, well, that 10 just went up to 15 or 20 because you've got to give those other people a position. Does everybody follow that?
No, I don't. You got to say it again.
So in that program, they still are owed a job technically.
In what program?
So, let's do it again. So you got elementary, say next year, we, enrollment, whatever, you know, there's 10 more positions to get. There's 10. But now out of this other funding pot, you need, the money's going down, you need another 10 positions. Well, you already have 10 that you got to get vacancies for. These other 10 come over, now you need 20. They're owed a job. You guys get that?
You're just funded out of a different funding stream. But if that funding stream goes down.
Right now, I'm an instructional coach or support, there's not enough money. So now I got to go back to the classroom, you got to, you got to give me a position. So where I had 10, we needed to cut because of the enrollment or low class size. Now you need one for me. Now you need 11.
So teachers in other programs.
So that's going to be tough if that happens. It's probably a little easier at secondary and high school. Just keeping that in mind, you know, and I'm not trying to stir up anything, but you got to, these are things. This funding is going to be tough to handle.
So Vic, the question, the question that I really don't want to ask is, you're wording about owing them the job. Is that just because of the contract, the union contract?
Well, yeah.
But if the funding disappears and we can't pay for someone anymore?
When they go to take that job, there's contract, yeah, you've just got to give them their job back.
Which, let's be clear, I'm not advocating for firing people or letting people go. But at some point, if we don't have the funding for a position, we don't.
So what Vic means is like, we've got people with continuing contracts, but there's riff language in the contract. So funding drastically, if we were all the teachers in the district right here and we were all funded, but funding dropped and we had to reduce a teacher per contract, and I mean like actually lay off a teacher. Riff a teacher, the least senior teacher would have to not have a job any longer. Per contract language. So we do have contract language, but like from year to year, I mean, unless there's a riff situation, if you've got a continuing contract, you get to keep your employment with the district unless there's a big financial reason, you know, why we need to let you go. Does that make sense? So that's what you said, but ultimately, no, if finances drastically change, we could have to lay people off actually.
Yeah, but we try to get vacancies for that. So instead of 10 vacancies, you need 11 or 15. It's just we're not getting as many vacancies as, and then you can slide them into those vacancies. But I'm talking about here, '25, '26, so whoever's, don't misinterpret.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So just a heads up. So just to, just, just a heads up, so when, talk about this later, it's like, oh, yeah, we did talk about that a little bit. So that's it for this time, and we'll try to update the numbers and keep plugging away. So more general fund in a couple of weeks.
Anything for Vic?
Vic, I just wanna say thank you. You get up there, you get a lot of arrows slung your way.
It's good.
It's not all positive news, but we appreciate your, how you've gone through this and, and really kept us in, in the loop. So thank you, Vic.
All right.
All right. Up next, annual staff HR update. Dr. Pierce will be leading us through that.
I will. So normally you would see the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources giving this presentation, but as you know, we do not have an Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources since the end of December, so you got me tonight. So I put the presentation together and I just need to get it started here. Okay, so this is an annual report that we provide to the board. It's tied to our goal for all staff members to be safe, respected, and valued professionals. It's, there's gonna be some data shared from our annual staff survey and some other data. This is really just information and discussion for the board. There's no decision needed. It's tied to the board's role of system accountability and communication. And there's really, like I said, no next steps in terms of action needed, but, you know, potentially input that you might have for us moving forward. So I mentioned our staff-focused goal, and as you know, for each of our goals, we have annual objectives. And so for our staff-focused goal, our big areas are staff recruitment, hiring, and retention, staff value voice and recognition, and staff training, professional growth and performance. I won't be going through every little piece of this, but I will be highlighting a couple of things. One, our continued work on our Recruiting Washington Teachers and Teaching Academy, which is a long-term recruiting strategy for the district. I'll share some of our staff survey from, data from last year, because we just launched the annual staff survey for this year on Monday. So we're always kind of a year behind on the data sharing. Talk a little bit about some of our ongoing efforts to recognize our staff and help them feel appreciated. Touch on the work that we're doing with professional learning communities in terms of providing staff professional growth focused on student learning. And, and talk a little bit about our, how we hold staff, how, hold all staff to high standards for professionalism and performance, because that's an area that maybe some of our new board members aren't as familiar with. There's some of our performance indicators that get addressed during different staff presentations, like specifically the LNI claims and so forth. But I am gonna share where we are in terms of staff diversity, retention rate, and so forth, and also suggest a couple of changes to some of our methodology for calculating things moving forward. So these are the big, again, the big areas that we're gonna touch on in the presentation. And I will start with staff recruitment, hiring, and retention. Just, you know, it's, I think, a good segue from the budget that our staff, that, that's our greatest resource, right, as, as a school district. We are a people-focused business. We're focused on growing people, young people. And we spend, you know, eighty-five point one percent of our expenditures are on, on staff salaries and, and benefits. We share updated data in our annual report. Right now, we've got about twenty-two hundred full-time FTE-certificated and classified staff, and we've been reporting a ninety-one percent staff retention rate. And I wanna touch on how that's been calculated in the past and talk about a potential way of doing that differently moving forward, based on some research that I've done since I got to be the one to put together the presentation this year. So I'll start with some classroom teacher demographics. This is data that is available on the OSPI report card and something that we look at every year. So this is a historical view, just in terms of we, you know, shows that we have and historically have had more female teachers than male teachers in our system, and that's pretty typical of school districts. It doesn't really match with our student demographic, because we're pretty much more fifty-fifty split with our student demographic. When it comes to race and ethnicity, that's also something we look at specifically with teacher demographic kinda compared to student demographic. And so you can see, it's, it's remained pretty consistent over time, our staff demographics, and about eighty-four percent of our teachers, and I should make sure I'm talking, not all staff, I'm talking about teaching staff specifically, are white. And then you can see, the next highest number is our Hispanic Latino teachers, and then really pretty low percentages in our other race and ethnicity groups, which is a different from our student demographics. You can see that our, our Hispanic student population is increasing our overall, and we're almost getting to that, you know, being majority, where our white student population's been the majority previously over time. And, and then other groups, Black, African-American, Native American, et cetera, two or more races, those, those demographics have remained pretty steady over time.
Dr. Pierce, just a quick question. As we're going through these demographics, I was just curious, do we use, in our hiring practices, are we, does demographics influence our hiring practices, or do we just hire the best qualified person?
Yeah, we absolutely, and this always comes up every year when we talk about this. Yeah, we don't, we don't have any sorts of quotas or targets in, in terms of, of, of staff demographics. I think generally speaking, organizations, especially, you know, with, with teaching, it's, it's good to have a, a teaching staff that reflects the diversity of your student population. So we wanna make sure that we are, you know, recruiting, making sure that we're casting a wide net to all, you know, to, to a diverse population of people to, to, to come and apply with us, and then we're gonna hire the best qualified person.
So when, one of the goals is, is the, the percent difference of district staff diversity compared to overall community diversity is decreased by two percent?
Yeah.
What are we doing to calculate that?
Yeah.
And then what are we doing to make that happen?
Yeah, I'm gonna get to that. So good, good question. You're just jumping ahead a little.
Sorry. I, I didn't see that when I was going through the slide. I apologize.
You're good. So one thing that we haven't, well, I, I just wanted to display this a little bit differently maybe this year, is just to see, so as Dr. Miller's referring to one of the targets, and remember the board refreshed those targets at the beginning of this school year, it talks about the difference between staff diversity and community diversity. One thing that the state looks at and why they provide the data in the way that they do is kind of the difference in student diversity and teacher diversity, which I just showed you on different graphs, but this is what that looks like side by side, if that makes sense. So this just gives you a sense of, if you're looking at our student population, what the diversity is, and then compared to our teacher diversity, and where, where those differences are. So the same data you just saw, just displayed on one table. So getting to what we currently say on our district performance indicators and targets, there's two things that, that, two indicators that we have that I wanted to address a little bit tonight. One indicator is the percentage of district staff diversity compared to overall community diversity, and that's what Dr. Miller just mentioned. And that had been previously, if, if board members who were here when we refreshed these, that had been previously expressed in a different way. And the board had a long conversation about, you know, what is, what are we really trying to do? And I think overall in that net is we want our workforce to be reflective of our greater community and our student population. So we changed how that indicator was expressed. Now, I'm gonna, you know, full transparency, I, I'm having a hard time right now in, as I put this presentation together, in determining where, what, where this percentage came from. So I, I think I've got maybe a good handle on how we can do this moving forward, but I, I was struggling a little bit to, to, to figure out where, what, where did this sixteen percent difference come from? So, and then I'm also gonna address something about the staff retention, which we've said, yeah, I mean, obviously, we wanna retain our highly effective staff and, and keep them working with us. And so there's a little bit of issue with how that, I think, how we're expressing that currently that I wanna address too. So first of all, in trying to recreate, to try to figure out what is our community diversity currently, which is not something that we had explicitly like reported out, we just said the sixteen percent. I went to, to census data. Okay, so I've got the source here. And based on census data, so this is Kennewick, not Kennewick School District, but Kennewick City, you know, Kennewick, Washington. In, based on July twenty-twenty-two census, this shows the community diversity. Okay? And then I can pull up our teaching staff diversity. So not all staff categories, but our teaching staff diversity, which I just showed you on the previous slides, and have that on the table here. And I can show you the difference between overall community diversity in terms of looking at city of Kennewick and Kennewick School District. So anything here I can't figure out, I, I don't know where the twenty-one, because this data point says twenty-twenty-one, and I've just, I'm, I'm sorry, and nobody is able to figure out necessarily where it came from. Because, so, but I do think now if we have, we can use this methodology moving forward, we've, I've got the, you know, for, for the next person, I've got the data sources cited here, and we can say, okay, here was the, and I, I, how, is the census done every?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay. So that might be a little bit of an issue, you know, but it's pretty up to date right now, but, you know, eight years from now, it's probably not gonna be very up to date in terms of that community diversity. Because if we don't have a good, solid handle on where that community diversity data is, we can't compare our teacher-staff diversity data to it. But I would say right now, if we just kind of took, if, if, if how we're expressing diversity is like white and non-white, like right now, there's a twenty-two percent difference. So I would say for twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-three, twenty-four results, I would put twenty-two percent here based on this slide. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that was one of the questions I had, was, is are we using the community? When you're saying community, are we using, are we going to use Kennewick City? Or are we going to use, we're talking community, are we talking about the school district as our community? Meaning the, the student population being the community that we're looking?
Yeah, I, I just wasn't sure how we came to the numbers that we had, and, and then how, again, I was, numbers are great, but how are we going to change them? What are, what are we specifically doing?
Right.
To push things?
That's just the thing is, in my opinion, like, this doesn't, I don't even know why we even talk about this. Like, I don't care if the teacher is black, white, yellow, male, female, like, I just could not care less. I just want a good teacher teaching our kids. So like, I don't, I, I think this is, this is a silly goal they even have, really, like, why, just, let's just get, let's just hire the best teacher. I wish the names and the gender and the races were off the applications, and we're just looking at the teacher and just pick the best teacher, period. That's what I.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess the, what I would say to that, though, is, is that determining who is the best teacher can be a little difficult. If you have two equals that are essentially equal, I think there's value in, to some degree, reflecting the community.
Sure.
Because I think it helps the, the kids that are there, and, and that's why, to me, I actually think the community really we're looking at is more of the school district, the, the kids in the school. Because I think there's benefit in people seeing people like them. And, and so I, I can appreciate all things being equal. We always hire the best candidate, but I think a lot of times, you're gonna have two candidates that are essentially equal. And, and, and saying, if they're, they're equal, how can we better represent our community in our schools? I can appreciate that. Again, that's only if they're equal. But I think it's important that, that's why I'm saying, what, what are we doing? What, are we doing?
And then we can get kinda to that next point.
Yeah.
Once we, you know.
Once we can get good data.
Yeah, yeah. And so if we, like, taking what, what you're suggesting, I think it would change that indicator to the percent of district teaching staff diversity compared to overall student diversity.
Yeah.
And, and that would, that's where this data would come into play.
And that's, and, and, yeah, in these slides, I saw both being used. I wasn't sure which, what we were calling our community. Are we calling the city? Are we calling the, the school district? And, and I was, wasn't sure.
Is the, on the slide with the July twenty-two Kennewick information?
This one?
Yeah, on this slide, so is that Kennewick, Washington, is that all like citizens from one month old to a hundred years old? Or is that reflective of, like, the work, like workforce specific, so, right? Because our, all our teachers are gonna be?
I'm, I'm assuming, and I would need to go back and double check, but it's like anybody, like census takers, right? It's census data, so if you participated in, were counted in the census, then you're counted in this data set.
I mean, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter which one we choose. We just need to choose one.
Right.
And be consistent.
Right.
And then as, you know, particularly with you, unfortunately, moving on in the next couple of years, we need to make sure that, that our data collection, our, our methods are clearly, clearly explained.
Exactly.
So that whoever fills this role next, because it, it won't be you, because you're not gonna be the HR person, unfortunately. Unless you're looking for another job. But, but just so we can make sure this is clear, because it.
Exactly. And that's my interest as well, and that's why I wanted to kinda point this out, because I think we need to maybe rethink this methodology and be really clear on it. And actually, I mean, my, my, my opinion is that we should, that it makes more sense to have it be teaching staff diversity compared to overall student diversity.
And that's a number we can easily track.
Right. And I think we have some efforts that I can point to, I will point to tonight, that really do, are intended to move that needle. And so maybe at a subsequent meeting, I can just bring a modified key indicator for this and get formal board approval on that. Okay, so that's where we are with that. Now, the other one that I thought was kinda interesting as I dug into this is the staff retention rate. So how, and like I said, we have reported that out as ninety-one percent. And we did share a methodology for how that's calculated. And this is what's been shared in the past with a little modification that I added. So what we shared previously is that since twenty-eighteen, we've hired two-hundred-and-seventeen teachers, and of those two-hundred-and-seventeen new top, new hires, we've retained a hundred-and-ninety-eight, and that's where the ninety-one point two retention rate for KSD was how it was calculated. And then we pointed out that the state average is eighty-four percent. So first thing I did was go and just dig into where did we get the information about the state average being eighty-four percent? And there is a, a report, an OSPI report that was conducted by the University of Washington. But how they calculate that eighty-four percent is not the same way that we're calculating this ninety-one percent, okay? So what that report said is that in Washington State, from one year to the next, on average, eighty-four percent of teachers are retained in their same school, seven percent moved to another school within the district, and on average, two percent changed districts. And this was a nineteen, a twenty-seventeen report. So I'm like, well, this is kinda comparing two different data points that are different methodologies for calculating them, it doesn't really, it needs to be addressed, I think.
Retained in the same school is gonna go haywire the next few years.
Well, yeah. So, yeah. And then, and then the other thing is, I just was digging into some research on teacher retention, right? And, and what we really want is healthy functional retention. You want retention of effective teachers. You maybe do want turnover of ineffective teachers. So we really need to be thinking about this a little bit deeper. We don't wanna retain ineffective teachers. We don't want a hundred percent retention of ineffective teachers, you know, we want, and we don't want turnover of effective teachers, right? So that's unhealthy dysfunctional retention, we want healthy functional retention. So what I really think we should be looking at is teacher mobility, retention, and turnover data. And I think what we need to be tracking every year is the number of teachers who leave the district each year, how long that teacher's been, each of those teachers has been teaching, what's their contractual status or, or evaluation status? what's their contractual status or evaluation status? And, and we do have that, right? And then the reason for leaving. I mean, if they're retiring, like I am, right? That's, I mean, after thirty years, that's, you know, it's like, that's different from somebody who's leaving for a different purpose, right, or a different reason. And then I think we need to be tracking the number of teachers who are moving buildings each year. And again, this year's going to be an anomaly, right, with, with boundary. But how long those teachers have been teaching, how long they've been in their current building, their contractual status and a reason for moving. So like this year, it would show reason for moving, boundary change, right? Like reassigned, transferred due to boundary. Because I think what this, this level of data would help us know if there are particular issues in certain buildings that are maybe contributing to effective teachers not wanting to teach in that building for some reason. Or, or, you know, and how that maybe correlates to poverty rates in buildings. Because you want, you know, you don't want high levels of turnover in, in schools where really the students need the most highly trained, effective teachers, you know? And we're not really looking at it to that level, and I think we should. So that's what I'm suggesting is going to, you know, require a setting up a system and, you know, to make sure that we can do this, and I think that we can. But then I think we can report out data here that makes a little more sense if, if that, yeah. Does, am I?
Yeah, no, I think it's great. One question I did have is, and I just, it's, it's my lack of, of understanding. When, when you say evaluation status, is that basically going to be, the evaluation accounts for, you know, improvement in their students over the, kind of how they're, that gives us a kind of the key indicators of how they're doing in helping their students progress, right?
Yeah, they actually, we'll, I'll get to this a little bit when we get to how we, how we evaluate teaching staff, but they actually get a score.
Yeah.
That ends up sort of, that's like whether they're, you know, basic proficient distinguished or unsatisfactory.
But the score doesn't always tell us everything, right? It, the number kind of takes a lot of different areas into, I guess that's my, it may be that their teaching isn't the issue in the evaluation. And going back to the slide you had, I love that, is, is that they're an effective teacher, they just might not be in a, there may be other factors in their evaluation. Do you see what I'm saying? And I almost want to just say, somehow see how good they're doing as a teacher. It could be that they're the wrong fit, and so they get a poor evaluation because they're not a good fit for where they're at, but they're a great teacher. Does that make sense? There may be other issues that are affecting their evaluation.
Yeah, although I'm not, I'm not sure that those, there could be other issues that are affecting their wanting to stay or go, but maybe not affecting their actual evaluation.
Okay.
Status. I, what I was thinking is, if, I mean, it's one thing, too, if, if you're on a leave replacement, a contract, if you were hired as a leave replacement, it means that someone is going out on a leave, and I'm hired to replace that person, but they're going to come back. And when they come back, I don't have a continuing contract. I don't have a job anymore. So that, that's also one thing. If someone is, is, was with us and then they're leaving because they didn't have a continuing, they, they were on a leave replacement contract, that's different from someone who's been teaching with us for ten years and they're leaving, right? And then I think there's a difference between if someone has received unsatisfactory evaluations and they're leaving, you know, that's, that's probably something that we want to have happen. Versus that they've been receiving satisfactory evaluations and they're leaving, and we don't want them to leave. So it's, it's kind of getting a bigger picture of, and looking at like years with us, are we, are we providing enough support for our brand new teachers? And we do have things like our PAR program and, you know, certain supports that we provide to brand new teachers because we want to keep effective new teachers and have them stay with us. So I feel like this data will give us a little bit more information on kind of what things, where might we need to focus efforts to support and have healthy, functional retention. Okay. So, you know, some, what, in terms of recruiting, I mean, this kind of is a good segue into some strategies that we have. We do try to cast a wide net in, in our HR department and have our HR professionals attend regional and statewide job fairs to really educate people, you know, about how great it is to work for Kennewick School District and to, to bring principals and other people who can speak to what it's like here. We've got real good relationships with universities. You know, we use all like the social media and those kinds of things. And, and so we do also have our own in-district job fairs as well. In terms of a long-term strategy that.
Tracy, real quick, I'm going to jump in here. So one of the things that I talked to Doug about before he left, especially if we're looking, say, look, we want our, our teachers to look more like our students, we need to go where there's a higher, you know, again, higher Hispanic, we need to go to them. Just sending out emails is great, but if you want, if you want those people, you need to show that it's important to you and to the school district that we want these people here. And again, at no point am I saying let's lower our standards. I'm saying we need to go to them and say, look, we are actively recruiting. And we want you here, and it's so important for us that we're applying our butts down here to come, stand in front of you and interact. Because that's, there's nothing, you can't beat face-to-face interaction. I don't care how nifty our website is, we need to go. Anyway, that's enough of me.
And I do remember you saying that before. And so, you know, that's, the other, we also have a long-term recruiting strategy, and I know the board knows about it. And it's our Teaching Academy and Teaching Bridge, and it's really our Grow Your Own program. And rather than me talk about it, I wanted to show you a little quick video. But I also wanted to show you some data from School Links. Remember, this is the High School and Beyond Plan. And I went in to look, and this gives us how many of our high school students right now are saying that I have an interest in an education career. So you can see, we've got a hundred and fifty-six interested in early childhood and elementary ed and seventy-two interested in, in high school. So like, we've got the next generation potentially of teachers, you know, in our high schools right now, and we want to be cultivating their interest and so forth. And so we've got that great partnership with W S U. And rather, like I said, than me talk about it, there's a couple-minute video that I wanted to show. Oh, work for me, video. I don't know why it does that, it works at my desk, and then I get it here and it doesn't work. Well, I will email it to you, but it's out on YouTube. And we've shown it in some of our state of the district presentations and so forth, but okay, if you can, that would be awesome. You're my hero, thank you. I had it embedded in there and it was working, but.
As a side note, I did find it interesting that the number three option here was.
I know.
Professional athlete.
Professional athlete.
Yeah, I was going to ask, how old are they when they fill out?
High school.
Oh, high school?
Okay, perfect.
The Teaching Bridge program came as an idea that we had, and it was really something where we wanted to grow our own and really put a focus on our teaching profession and tapping into our students here locally and creating a program where they could not only learn about what it's like to be a teacher, work in education while they're in high school, but then bridge them to a college. So the signing came about, some people have heard of when students get scholarships for athletics, that they have a signing day and sign on to go on to their career to play whatever sport they're in. We thought it would be a really cool idea to have our students do a signing day to sign on to be future teachers, that they're pursuing their education, and we really wanted to celebrate that.
First years of the program, you get brought into the Kennewick School District to work. And they help you get a job inside of it as a substitute parent, and then eventually as a parent in general. And then when you graduate, they actually help you find a job into the Kennewick School District.
I have always loved teaching from the very beginning, as long as I can remember. And when I heard of this opportunity to do Teaching Academy, I immediately took it. And in the end, it's very worth it. It's a really amazing experience and a valuable experience.
I'm getting to experience being a teacher early, and so I'm already getting to meet a lot of people in the district. It's just a great experience so far.
So I really want to be a middle school English teacher. And I want to be that because in middle school, I know it's a really hard time for kids because they're going through teenage years and just a lot of changes. And I want to be there as someone who they can talk to and rely on.
W S U Tri-Cities has been an amazing partner, they were all on board with us. We've written lots of grants, we have done lots of planning to figure out like coursework and what would make sense for students to take a series of coursework together as a cohort, to also be able to have time to work during the day as substitute parent educators for us, so the students have the ability to work while they're going to school. Really, any student is best suited for this. It's just someone that has a passion for education, someone that feels they want to give back to their community. This is the next generation, and we need teachers, and we need people in our profession that are just caring, passionate individuals. And that's really what I've seen from the students that have come through so far.
So a little bit about that program, and I wanted to share some updated statistics with you. We currently have sorry, stop that, okay. Sorry about that. So we have fifty Teaching Academy students enrolled at the programs at the three big high schools. We have seven Teaching Bridge students who are currently working as substitute parent educators in our system, and two of those were also hired by W S U. There's thirteen students fully approved for Teaching Bridge next year, and the signing day is coming up in May. So board members are invited to attend signing day. This year, I'll send that information out to you as well. But you saw that was the Chancellor Haynes from W S U at the signing day and parents and students. So, I mean, that's one of our long-term strategies, is like getting our students, we have a diverse student population, finding out who's interested in teaching, and then fostering that through the C T E courses that we offer in our high schools, and then helping bridge them to higher ed and keeping that connection with them, with the goal of hiring them back to be teachers with us when they're ready, so.
And how long has this been going on for?
It just started last year. We've had Teaching Academy courses in the high schools for a number of years, but the Teaching Bridge program, the partnership with W S U, was first year last year.
Fruit of the labor of the a couple of years.
Yeah. Okay, so just shifting to the second area around staff recognition, you know, once we hire teachers, and, you know, we want to, we want to keep them. And so there's lots of recognition, board's aware of, you know, recognition that we do at the board meetings. We've got, you know, kudos that go out and, and just various different efforts to help people feel appreciated. We also get data every year from all staff, not just teaching staff, from all staff. And we look at that data and we use it to help inform, you know, what we need to continue to work on. So the data I'm going to show, I'm just going to highlight a few things.
You said that this is from a year ago and it just came out? The new one just came out?
So, yeah, so we, the data that you're going to see tonight is from the Spring twenty twenty-three survey. Now, this is not the first time we've looked at it. But this is the first time we're showing it like formally to the board. And then the, this survey just got, for this year, just got deployed on Monday.
Yeah, is, I guess, the one thing I'm looking at is, is on our scale, there's four options. But there's no neutral option. So if someone doesn't feel strongly one way or another, they're forced to. I think we need to add a neutral option.
It's kind of funny because we.
Too much neutral, like.
Well, if it's neutral, it tells you, that actually tells you a whole lot.
Yeah, so we shifted, so, I mean, yeah, that was.
Okay.
We'll talk about that later. But we did, we do, we did shift to a four-point scale. Okay, and this is, these are the questions that we ask all staff. So every staff member who takes the surveys asks these set, this set of questions. And then we also ask a specific set of questions just to teaching, like, certificated staff. So when we look at the all-staff questions, again, you know, we want people to feel happy and satisfied at work and have a sense of belonging and, and value and so forth. So this gives you our twenty twenty-three results compared to our twenty twenty-two results. You can see where we've like gone down a little, gone up a little. We went up significantly, and I feel a sense of belonging at work. Some of that might be attributed to, it, it had a reverse wording on the twenty twenty-two survey. And now I'm just kind of blanking on how, how it was framed. It's like the reverse, so if you answered affirmatively, yeah, you wanted a lower number. And it was just kind of confusing. We did that on the student surveys, too, and so we shifted everything just to have not a reverse. So that, it, we, this maybe was artificially low in twenty twenty-two because maybe it was confusing since, because the question was reversed. So I just put a little asterisk there. But in some of the areas, you can just see where we've gone up a little, we've gone down a little. And we do look at it and try to, you know, disaggregate it by role to see if there's certain, certain roles within the district that feel more or less valued, and what can we do about that, et cetera. When we, I kind of did this, you know, where we're down and where we're up from the previous year. And then we ask some additional questions if you're instructional staff, meaning certificated teaching staff, counselors, you know, S L Ps, all those kinds of folks. So if you're certificated staff, you also get these set of questions. And we did, there, some of these areas, we don't have a data point from twenty twenty-two because we added new questions. So that's, if you see the dash, dash, it's just because that wasn't a question that was asked because we did some revisions to the survey. But on this, I think there's, there's two pieces of data that we looked at earlier, way earlier this year, that helped inform some efforts that we have underway this year. So if I look at, you know, there's some really good data here overall, but the things, the two data points that are the lowest are my school has high expectations for student behavior. Academics, yes, behavior is pretty low here, and my students at, at my school respect adults. That's another low. So it's concerning numbers, and we recognize that. I just want to show kind of explicitly how we take these data points and how they inform our objectives. So again, you're seeing this data now, but we saw it long ago. And so when we developed our twenty twenty-three, twenty-four objectives, and this was something the board kind of talked about, too, oops, sorry, we've got, we've got an objective here to really like provide review and training on student behavior and discipline policies to ensure consistent expectations and implementation across schools. So we've been doing work this year, and we've had conversations with the board in study session and so forth about discipline and expectations and just, you know, we, we don't want to have these numbers be low where staff are feeling like there's not high expectations for student behavior and that students aren't respecting adults. So hopefully, our efforts, you know, if you look at the twenty-two to twenty-three results, this was a question that was asked, it's like went up tiny. I wouldn't say anything significant, right? But so it's still an area we need to work on. One of the groups that's helping to us to look more closely at this data is the Staff Wellness Committee. This committee was formed several years ago, and, you know, they focus on sharing resources and supports for staff, but also, sorry, I keep doing that, but also digging into our annual staff survey data and helping us look at like, what are some things that we could do? And is there other data that we might need to collect? Tony Niedhold, who's our Director of Human Resources, she facilitates that group. And you can see we've got teachers and administrators and other district staff on that committee. So I'm going to move along here to Staff Training, Professional Growth and Performance. So again, one of the things that we articulate in our staff-focused goals, that we want our staff to be held, held to high standards for performance, and we want to support them in doing that. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on professional learning communities, but this is one of the things that's in our objectives for our staff-focused goal, is to support the work of professional learning communities because it, it allows for the professionals, our teachers, to to get together and share best practice and look at data and really share their expertise. And so these are those four questions that drive the work of professional learning communities. We've got contract language about professional learning communities and what that work is. It's about standards alignment, looking at assessment, developing interventions and enrichments. And there's time in our, in our calendar to support that through early release days. So there's a minimum amount of early release time that is to be spent on PLC work. And I won't spend much more time because Alyssa's been sharing some of those updates in those presentations from teaching and learning as well. What I wanted to spend a little more time focused on is how we, what are, what are our standards for performance? For, for different groups? And how are people held to those standards of performance? So we have state frameworks for certificated staff, administrative staff, and actually for me, right? And for you. And so I just wanted to, to highlight that. And these frameworks define the performance standards. What do we expect from our teachers? What do we expect from our principals? What do we expect from our superintendent? What do we expect, what does the board expect of themselves? And it defines what proficient, distinguished look like and what like unsatisfactory and basic looks like. So for teachers and building administrators, these criteria are outlined actually in state law. Okay, so there's state, there's eight criteria for teachers and there's eight criteria for building administrators. The law says that's what we need to be focusing on in terms of evaluating teachers and principals. And then districts can choose for teachers from like three state-approved frameworks. We use the Danielson framework. The Danielson framework takes these eight criteria. It's like they're organized essentially into four domains of planning and preparation, learning environments, learning experiences, and principal teaching. And one of the objectives that you see on our strategic plan this year is to do some work around learning, around some of the framework updates. So there's an updated version of this, of this teaching framework. For building administrators, those criteria again are in law. And then they're reflected in the criteria in the AWSP or Association of Washington School Principals framework. And so these are the frameworks that drive the evaluation processes for teachers and principals. We also have, and this started two years ago, this is our second year, of having a standards-based central office administrator framework as well. So all the central office directors and cabinet members and so forth, we use the WASA, the Washington Association of School Administrators Framework. And it focuses on these criteria and elements. Okay? Just real quick, the Danielson framework, these are the, these are the components of the Danielson framework. So when principals go to observe teaching, this is what they're looking for. And there's descriptors that go with each of these that say this is what unsatisfactory, basic, proficient, distinguished looks like. I think it's also just important to note that starting this year, right? Is our first year of implementing a standards-based framework for superintendent evaluation. And that's based on the WASDA framework. And then the board also has an annual process for self-evaluating. You self-assess yourself against the WASDA framework for board members. And so that process, just for, just so you know, new board members happens. And there's an online tool that you'll receive. And then the board spends time at the June retreat digging into that self-assessment. My point really isn't so much that. It's just that all, you know, we want a standards-based system for how we're approaching performance. Essentially, what that looks like for holding teachers accountable to these standards of performance, holding principals accountable, holding staff accountable. There's a reflection and self-assessment component of this, kind of like what the board does. Looks like, hey, these are the standards. How do I think I'm doing against these standards? And then a conversation with the, with the supervisor saying, you know, this is how I think I'm doing. The supervisor's saying, well, here's what I think, you know, you need to work on. Or here's where I think your strengths are and here's where your areas of growth. Defining kind of what are those activities, what data are you going to collect? And then for classroom teachers, there's observations that happen informally and formally. So principals are regularly in classrooms, seeing what that looks like and looking for that evidence of performance level. Ultimately, that all gets summarized in a summative written evaluation. And there is a number associated with that per state law. And so back to that retention discussion or the, I'm sorry, the
Yeah.
You know what I'm doing. Sorry. Yeah, that we would have that and that data point to say, you know, are we retaining effective teachers? Okay.
How often? Oh, good. Oh, perfect. How often are teachers evaluated?
So it's, I mean, there's, it's an annual evaluation, but it's not like an episodic thing where just once a year, there's an observation and that's what's based on your evaluation. It's an ongoing data collection, kind of formative process all year long that results in a summative evaluation. But there's like timelines and that are all set out through contract and so forth.
Okay.
But so there's like an ongoing feedback process that happens throughout the year.
So one of the things that I'm really interested to have a discussion about, and I think it probably fits best in our subcommittee discussion, but I just wanted to bring it up here so that you can be prepared. I am really, really interested in digging into these different levels of teaching and particularly want to learn about distinguished teachers. How many teachers do we have in the district that are distinguished? What can we do to make, to get more distinguished teachers? And from what I understand, I've only had a couple of conversations of it, that it sounds like kind of the distinguishing factor in becoming a distinguished teacher. Did I just say distinguishing factor? We can is being able to really engage student learning and have the learning be student-driven. And I've seen in other areas where that has worked really, really well to engage this generation of students. And I, it just leaves me wondering if we're not doing that. And so I'd love to have a discussion with the district about who, who are our distinguished teachers and how can we get more?
And then just to clarify, distinguished teachers, for people may not know, that's, that's an actual title. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a level of teaching. It's not just saying they're great teachers. It's, they're meeting certain qualifications.
Right. In the Danielson framework, it's unsatisfactory, satisfactory?
Unsatisfactory, basic, proficient, distinguished. And you're right that in many ways, the differentiating piece between proficient and distinguished on a particular component is the student agency part of it. Our students, has the teacher kind of cultivated an environment where the students are taking ownership of their own learning? Yeah.
On that, so you just, so basically one, two, three, and four, right? For teacher observations. What's, what's, what's a regular observation? Are you going most teachers, I mean, is two, find observation? Or are most teachers, like, are they wanting three? Like, what does that look like on a regular observation?
How, how long is it or how many? Is that
Just like, so like if you go in, you do an observation and the teacher is a two, is that good? Is that not great? Like, what is that equate to?
It's more of an ongoing like data collection. Like, so nobody's, nobody's, nobody's evaluation is based on one episode. Like me, if you're, if I'm the principal and you're the teacher, I go into your, your classroom, I do this one observation and now that's your evaluation. It's, it's more of an ongoing data collection process where part of the data is what's happening in your classroom. Part of the data is how are students learning? Part of the data is like, what are you bringing to the table when we're talking about? Because some of the domains are observable and some of them are around like planning and preparation. Like, I'm not going to see planning and preparation as your supervisor when I come and observe your classroom, but you're going to show evidence of here's my evidence around planning and preparation or domain four, which they just updated the name, but it's like professional responsibilities. But it's called something else now. But does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. So do we have Do we have expectations as a district around like fours and threes? Or is that the principal's sole responsibility? Is there the ones who determine where each teacher is at? I guess what I'm getting at is we're not telling principals or admins like, hey, you shouldn't have any fours. Like, that's up to them to make that determination.
We do a lot of training. And if you remember, I mentioned learning walks and kind of the calibration that we do together as administrators because we want there to be consistency in terms of how we're interpreting, what is evidence to support proficient or distinguished. But no, there's no, you know, there's minimum qual, there's minimum expectations in terms of like years of experience and all that's kind of outlined in contract for teachers. But there's no expectation around, don't give fours or something like that. Yeah, no.
Wait, what do you mean, there's minimum expectations around the teachers? That you can't become a distinguished teacher until you
No, more like you, you have to perform at at least this baseline threshold level or some things are going to happen.
Oh, okay. So is there something, like, there can only be X number of fours in the school? There's something like Oh, you're saying there's
Okay. Anybody else have any questions before we move on? Ask throughout? Perfect.
So just real quick, I think the next step then for me though is to come back with some edited indicate, key indicator wording to get your formal approval.
Yeah. I liked, I liked how you went through that retention. It'll give us much better information.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And I'm also in favor of using the school district as the community rather than the actual community.
Okay.
Real quick, sorry. I can't remember what it was now.
You know how to find me?
Yes, I do.
All right, so we'll move on to our next
Just the full staff survey results you see are in there. It's in an appendix.
Sorry, I just remembered. Is there a way to look into, or are we using the data to look further into why teachers are feeling less safe this year than they did last year? Or why is it that they feel like their supervisor isn't coming in to give them feedback?
The other thing that we do is, so this is like big, you know, district-wide data. Every, we, every building gets their own data too. And then like the, our directors, our level directors, look at that too. So we can see what it looks like building by building.
Okay.
Great. So we'll
Let me take a five-minute break here.
Yeah, yeah. Two and a half hours. All right, so we'll take a five-minute break. Be back in five minutes. All right, so we'll take a five minute break, be back in five minutes.
When you come up, we're like, we can't.
All right, so back at it, highly capable program, Alyssa, take it away.
Okay. So tonight I'm wanting to give an update on some of the work that's been happening with highly capable. In the consent items this evening, it is required each year that the board review our annual plan. So that was in consent items, but we've been doing some intentional work and a program review. And I wanted to just share where we're at in that work in our elementary. So I'm going to just kind of review our programs, some of the terminology, the recommendations we've been working from and just where we're at in them. So the board will recall, last year we had a program review of highly capable that had some recommendations. I'm going to share those in a minute. And then also there was some new legislature requiring universal screeners for, to see if we can identify students for highly capable services. So that was a good catalyst for us to really increase our attention to highly capable services this year. So right now, at the elementary level, we have three different models for highly capable services. We have one that's called COG, one that we call a small group pullout and an after school program. So our COG program is at Vista. It's a self-contained program for third, fourth, and fifth graders who qualify. And I've noted the numbers of participants this current school year and then also last year. I put preliminarily there because our after school young scholars have kind of been added to. And I don't, I don't feel that 134 is quite accurate yet to pull the data for that. Our schools, our students at Amen Creek, Cottonwood, Ridgeview, Sagecrest have a pullout model of support where they get 30 minutes or so each day with math or reading at their accelerated levels. And then at our, mostly our Title I schools who've qualified, it's an after school model, usually once a week. So that's our current highly capable model. So last year we engaged with Hanover Research to look at best practices in highly capable programs. And they helped us with some recommendations. In the fall, I shared these recommendations with the board along with some of the areas we're working on. And so I just wanted to dig in and give some updates on those areas. So the first recommendation that we've been working on is to really investigate some root causes of inequities between our models. You'll notice that some of our schools, our students are being served after school. And at four of our schools, they're served during the day. And so this is concerning with how our students are being served. We're working this year with our principals to make sure we have a better plan in place for next year. So our goals are that we have services throughout the day across the whole school district and that we have similar services in the schools. Asterisk, asterisk, COG, we're not touching COG. COG is staying as is. This program review is really for all of our other sites. We want to make sure that students are improving academic achievement along with that self-efficacy. We want to make sure that we've got teachers using a lot of differentiation to meet the diverse needs of their students. And we want to make sure that we're weaving gifted education and talent development into the whole day, not just at this 30 minute time or after school. We've got kids who are highly capable, but they're not performing. And so weaving this gifted education, really using different strategies and this model that we want to go to next year will really help those kids excel. We know they can do it. We just got it. We've got to help them get there. We want to really make sure that this is happening in that tier one instruction. That's the main classroom in elementary school and that it's part of that regular school day. But yet it's differentiated at the same time. So for next year, this is what we're preparing for. Like I said, COG is staying the same. But we're not going to have a pullout model at four schools. We're going to have a cluster model across all of our elementary schools. And what that means is our students are, our highly capable students are clustered together in groups in their classroom. And the teacher's going to receive training and ongoing support of how to differentiate within the classroom throughout the day. We're not just going to say bye, young scholars. We're going to kind of open it up as an after school opportunity for the whole school, not just the highly capable qualified students. But we're going to tighten it a little bit and attach it to competition that has some structure. So we're going to give support for schools wanting to have teams in destination imagination, science olympiad, robotics, math is cool. But it's really geared towards that team, working together as a team on something and taking to competition for our after school model. And it would, would be open to all students.
Alyssa, so the, the classroom, the highly capable students clustering in a classroom will be with one specific teacher or mixed amongst the grade level with multiple teachers? Because I can foresee teachers now may in math and reading have students with abilities from like A to D, right?
Yeah.
Now you're going to have kids with H.
Yeah.
So now you've got a wide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our, so you've kind of got two questions there and I'm, so I want to answer them separately. Our schools are already doing a lot of what's called walk to read or walk to math, where the students are working in small groups at times at their level in reading and math. So they, our students who are very accelerated can continue with that. The cluster model would be during the day. And the number of teachers, it depends on the number of kids. So at some schools, it might be one per grade level, some it might be two, some it might be three. And, and we want to be very strategic. And this is where we're working with our principals right now when we're making our, our groups of students is we want to have highly capable students and high achieving. So we've got great diverse classes every place. We do not want to make just a highly capable class and other classes don't have those students.
The other thing I would just point out is, you know, right now, these students are in classrooms.
Yes.
The, the clustering is, is really about kind of strategically scheduling and providing good support to teachers to meet the needs of the kids that are in their classroom.
Quick question, is the after school young scholars, is that going to be now for all schools or just for the?
We will open it. Yeah, no, we'll open it to the 17.
So it'll be all schools?
Mm-hmm. And in talking with principals, some feel they have a lot of activities already. We were, we're going to offer it and highly, highly encourage that we have those opportunities for our students to participate in. And they're excited. They're excited about some of that structure that's coming. So that's, that's kind of where we're at on recommendation number one. Recommendation two is going to talk a little bit more about communication and transparency on how students qualify for highly capable services. And this really went nicely with the state saying we need to have a universal screener at least twice, once before second grade and once before sixth grade. And we were already doing universal screeners in second grade at those 14 young scholar schools. But this, this made it so it was across all of the schools. We also needed to make sure we had referrals in other grade levels and by parents and by teachers. So with that guidance, we looked at our screening processes, which I'll talk about in a minute. I just wanted to share before I go there, kind of the increase we saw with these universal screeners. We don't have complete data for 22, 23, so there's a gap there. And then in 21, 22, you'll see it was a different, it was a different test. And it was only at 14 schools in second grade. We did not do the universal screener in fifth grade this year. So we, we did see an increase using the COGAT as our cognitive universal screener. And we think that will continue to grow as we have training with teachers, start looking for a high, highly capable qualities and characteristics outside of the cognitive and academic achievement. We can be looking at creative skills as well. And we just really want to grow that. I mentioned communication was part of this recommendation and what the screening process is. So with those universal screeners, we've made sure, we've assembled a multidisciplinary team to review our students. They're looking at multiple data points. It needs to be a preponderance of evidence that a student qualifies for highly capable services. So we are looking at cognitive information, academic achievement, parent feedback, teacher feedback as well. We're looking at not just like grade level, but also H data as with those cognitive screeners. So we really feel we've increased looking at multiple data points for highly capable services this year. We sent letters through Parent Square, which is nice because then they're translated for us as well of when students are qualifying. And we've updated some timelines of when services will be starting. I'm going to show you the timeline here just on this one. We worked to get, to get our website information a little clearer for parents and also our staff. So we have some consistent messaging when our families are asking questions. So this is just a snip of the highly capable program link page on the KSD website. We have the, our timelines. We worked to make sure parents knew when the window was open to make a parent referral and then some of those highly asked questions. Our third recommendation was working on professional development for staff, increasing collaboration as well. And this one really came from the surveys we did with staff. On the heels of COVID, our highly capable teachers really stopped meeting for a little while. And this was a good time to just bring back time to meet. We brought back monthly meetings with young scholars and highly capable teachers. And we are planning some intentional training here coming up in the next few weeks and at the end of June on that cluster model that I mentioned too, that we're going to next year. We're working with our principals to work on like why the cluster model is the best model for highly capable students during their monthly meetings as principals. And we're just excited that we've got this time right now to get all that foundational learning and that why right now as we're gearing up for next year. I also wanted to share with, we've kind of moved some funding around. It's all cost neutral. But we are gonna, we're in the process of hiring a district level highly capable specialist. And this will be a certified teacher trained in highly capable learning, how to identify students. And they, they're going to be helping support that cluster model implementation and our teachers. They'll be available for trainings. They'll be meeting regularly. They can go out to classrooms to help support teachers. They'll also oversee our screening and processes so we can have a really consistent process for our families and students. So we're really excited about that support that we're going to be bringing. A couple of questions that came up from board members are, and I, I sort of touched on it. We can talk a little bit more. What do we do for students who are highly capable but not necessarily high achieving? So the, both these terms are used sometimes and sometimes they're used incorrectly. So highly capable means I look and my brain processes information differently. I pick up on different things. I can learn very quickly or I get really into a content area fast. High achieving, we've got kids who may have like an average score on like a cognitive test, but are getting straight A's, are on grade level on star reading, star math, even maybe a little above grade level. But they're, they aren't processing information differently. And it'll be vice versa. We've got kids who are getting a 95, 96% on a cognitive test, but on say star reading, star math, they are below grade level. Or just right at the bottom of at grade level. So this cluster model is going to be great because if we're identified as highly capable, we're going to be around some peers. We're going to have some training with our teachers to be differentiating in the classroom. And that cluster model will be helping those highly capable students who might not right now be doing walk to read in the highest group and still get the services. For, do we want to talk anymore about that before I go to the other question?
So in that scenario, I think I'm still having a hard time understanding. So that was my question. I'm having a hard time still understanding. So the COG kids would be, would they, would those be kids that are considered to be highly capable and high achieving?
A lot of them are doing well. I have, have very high scores on cognitive screeners and 95th, 96th percentiles in reading and math, but not always.
Sure.
We've got say a multilingual learner who is learning language really, really fast. That's an indicator for a COG invitation.
So then for those kids that don't receive the COG invitation?
Yeah.
And are at their home school in the cluster model?
Mm-hmm.
Is, you're still using that multi, it's not multi disciplinary?
MTSS, that multi tiers.
You're just using multiple factors to determine whether or not they are a highly capable student?
Yeah. Let me explain it this way and see if it helps.
Yeah.
For COG to qualify, it's like this and this and this. For highly capable services at a school, it's this or this. So it's, you might be highly capable in reading or math, or you might have a very high cognitive score, but not the others. But you still qualify for services at your neighborhood school.
So with the cluster model, they'll have some students that might be doing highly capable services in only reading? Or some only in math or some in reading?
Yeah, yeah, it's possible. I think we need to grow and give support to our teachers to differentiate for our highly capable students who are highly capable but not achieving highly.
Yeah, I'm concerned about those kiddos. I've had two conversations at two different elementaries about this exact thing. And I don't, I hesitate to say often. I don't want to make generalities, but kind of the conversations we've had, I've had with these principals is that often these kiddos that score highly capable, but not necessarily high achieving?
Yeah.
Have some partnering, just, you know, maybe they're a little more squirrely than others.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so they, they're a little bit concerned that they're going to have a classroom clustered of some of these kids together that maybe not live.
And that's where our training is coming in. So we can address one, those concerns and we have strategies for them. And we do need to work on our, increasing our knowledge that there are different profiles of highly capable students. So we're going to be growing in that. Our program review was really focused on elementary. When we talked a little earlier about math this year, we talked about really in middle school and in high school, the highly capable options are those accelerated and advanced classes. And then some of those creativity ones are in those exploratory classes. Not, it's not necessarily in honors. And then there's extracurricular opportunities after school.
So this is also my question. And I was asking it mainly because I was thinking that we don't do that second universal screener until halfway, two thirds of the way through fifth grade.
Right.
And if we don't really have much of a highly, if we don't have much as far as highly capable services are concerned in middle and high school, I think we're doing that a little late because we're missing.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we've been talking a little. Yeah, and we, yeah, we've been talking a little bit about the grades we've chosen to do those. For example, if, if we did the universal screener in first grade, we could start the cluster model in second grade. So that, that's like a year out. And this year with doing it before sixth grade, we really want to make sure we're getting them into those honors classes in middle school. So I've taken those results and shared them with the principals to make sure they don't get missed and they're getting put into the correct math classes, the honors ELA classes. But, but I would agree, I think we've got some growth to do there and we need, we're totally open to moving those grade, where we're doing the two screeners.
I, I have a general question. How, are, are we doing anything to track the success of our highly capable kids beyond elementary school? So particularly comparing those that are, that will be in this cluster group or those that have used the pullout versus those at COG and, and seeing long-term outcomes like high school, you know, graduation, all of those kinds of things, where, you know, where are they attending schools? You know, colleges if they are. I, I guess my point is, is do we know which program works best based on outcomes?
Yeah, and that, that would be tricky. We, we can indicate and pull data if they're highly capable. But it change, how we track them in secondary and as required by the state is different than elementary. So we, we currently aren't right now to answer your question. And I, I would need to think a little bit about how we would do like a cohort study.
I, I guess my point is, is we would really want to know. I'd like to see data to say, first of all, are we, are we doing what these programs are intended to do? And that is, is allow these kids to excel further. If, if we find that by high school, they've, rather than excelled, they've basically gone back to the mean, then the program's not working. So we can't, we don't have a good judge of whether this program is working if we don't know what the outcomes are, right?
Which program are you referring to?
Any of them.
Okay.
Any of these programs are working if we don't have any outcomes. If we don't know whether or not we're helping these kids accelerate their learning. So if we don't have any long-term outcome data, so where, how do they do in, in middle school? And how do they do in high school and beyond? We don't actually know if we're, these programs are helping them accelerate their learning or if it's just something we're doing that makes us feel like we're helping them, but not making any difference.
And I don't, I think we've looked just at the year. We haven't necessarily looked at a group. So let me do some thinking on that one.
And maybe that's something that the specialists could, could help us with is collecting some of that data. So that two, three, four years down the road, we can say, hey, these people in the, for example, in the COGS program, here's how they do in, in, in middle school. Here's how the, the cluster groups, here's how they're doing in middle school. So we can actually say, are these program, we have a way of evaluating the program. Right now, we don't have any, anything that can help us evaluate the effectiveness of these programs.
Yeah.
Correct? And that's what it appears to be. We, we hope.
Yeah, the OSPI report card does, it's a program group. So we can look at it there, but I'd like to give it some thought.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I, I have a, I guess more of a comment and I need some reassurance. I just want to make sure by do, by what we're doing here, we're not lowering any of our expectation or standards by moving, you know, kids back into the classroom. And we've got plans in place to try to raise everybody versus bringing, bringing kids back in. Because we see across the state, there's, there's districts that are getting rid of highly capable programs and gifted programs and all that stuff. And I don't want us falling near that. I want us to continue with a high standard. So I guess it sounds like we're not, that's not happening. And I just, I guess one reassurance that we're still.
Yeah, it's one of the reasons we want that specialist position. So we're not just saying like we're doing this. And then it's the same instruction. We do want to make sure that we're doing that very thing.
We want to actually get more service, right? So like Alyssa said, COG, this has nothing to do with COG and there's no impact. For the kid, I mean, really what our, what our program looks like right now is you get 30 minutes a week. If you go to, if, if you're a kid who goes to four schools and if you're a kid who doesn't go to one of those four schools, you get an after-school program.
Once a week.
Yeah, it's like, that's what our, we're, we're, we're enhancing our service greatly is, and we want to just make sure that we're providing the support in the system to be able to do that. And the kids are already in the system. They're already in the schools, right? Yeah.
Great.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. So we'll move on. We have, next up is unfinished business, second step digital materials. And Alyssa, you are up again.
Yeah, I'm only going to be up here for a couple of minutes.
Very quick, huh?
And then I'm going to turn it over to the board for discussion. So, let's see. So I'm just going to kind of review just really, really quickly the second step material that IMC has a recommendation to the board for. So it, we have second step digital program in our, it's up for adoption. So just quickly, the elementary version has, these are the core competencies. It's divided into units. In middle school, we've got core competencies, themes, and then it's divided into units. And each board member has access to the platform and has had time to research it and look at all of these in detail. So there are scope and sequences available with second step. When the curriculum advisory committee was reviewing it, these were some of the notes that they shared. I shared these with the instructional materials committee. Our instructional materials committee reviewed this and want to recommend that it's approved for grades K through eight. At a previous board presentation, we went through these questions. I'm, I'm not going to go through them right now. I do want to mention the cost of second step. They've got, if you, the more schools that sign up, there's a little bit of a price break, but it's a subscription. And this is available on the website as well. So that is new information from when I was up here sharing in the past. That was my very quick overview. And just a reminder that the instructional materials committee would like to recommend it for approval.
We added the cost slide after the question came in, but I think it should have been included in the most recent update of board materials that's sent out this afternoon. Okay.
Quick question. When we're talking about approving, what are we, are we talking about approving a single site? Are we talking multi-site? Are we talking one years, three years, five years? Because as you can see, the cost is, that's what we're going to talk about.
So the IMC is recommending the material and then the schools and their budgets would determine what they can do. So I would say the board's looking at, is the material, do you want to approve the material?
So wait, let me understand. So if the material is approved, the schools can decide whether or not they want to use it? And that comes from some of their budget that's already allocated to them as a school?
Discussion, kick off some discussion here.
And, and do you have to do the full K through eight or can you do the K five? Because in, in the stuff that was provided and even online, it splits it up between elementary and, and middle. Do you have to do the K through eight or can you do the K through five and then?
So the IMC is recommending K eight as a board. You can discuss what you would like.
We can mostly vote on, on whichever. I'll, I'll just put, I'll just put out there just based on cost research. If, we have four schools that I know based on our feedback that we got, that Dr. Chris provided. We have four schools that use second step exclusively. We have four other schools that use it as an additional resource, resource to Character Strong. So if you look at four to eight schools, you're looking at roughly $10,000 to $20,000 for a one-year license combined with those schools. If you, if we went to all the schools, if all the schools, elementary through middle school, wanted to adopt it and get a license per site, that's 22 schools. That's $52,000 for a year, $198,000 for five years.
But I guess, but here's the thing, we're, that's, but that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is the, we're talking about the curriculum. The schools, each school has their budget that they can then decide to use this or not use this. Our only decision here tonight is whether we are going to approve this curriculum for use in the schools. That's it. It's then up to each school by themselves, Alyssa, please come, prevent me from wrong, to decide whether they want to do that. So this, this is not a budgetary discussion. This is a curriculum discussion.
But doesn't, wouldn't that impact the overall budget of the district?
No, because that's, because that's already in the, in the curriculum, it's already in our budget for curriculum.
Not even.
Okay.
Vic, is that right?
It doesn't, it doesn't mess with our budget.
From who?
From us.
So.
And then they can decide how to use it how they want.
It's not earmarked for anything in particular. It's not earmarked.
It's not like has pots that, kind of like we have.
They, they use a pot of money that is, it can be for social emotional learning. So they know that it, this is something. They currently can use Character Strong, second step. You've seen in some of the feedback from the schools that some use both because they use them a little bit differently. Some use one, some use the other. And the districts really kind of have the guidance that each school is different and we want a menu of approved materials to choose from.
How do we review updates? I mean, we just had, we just, we just all had resolution against the bill that passed in Washington. How do we, how do we review updates if certain things get pushed into this curriculum? This all, because right, right now, every school can teach SEL right now. So whether we approve this or not, that, that actually doesn't change, right? They, they still can teach it, they are teaching it, that's happening.
This is a resource.
This is just an additional thing that updates automatically. And my question is, how do we review that? What's the process in place to?
We typically, and it varies from publisher.
Can I just interject? Because I do recall that, that this question came up about, so I just want to make sure. I, I think that you're asking about the updates that the, the people make, not that like, right? Like to the materials.
Yeah, the material is, the material can be updated at any time according to laws.
Like for this specific one, they send out an email when there's an update and what it is. And they're all documented on their website. Whether it's a, we found a grammatical error, we've replaced pictures, or they've actually replaced content. And I think in, it was 2021, there's an update on there that says they took out third-party links on the dashboard. And that was one of the updates. In talking with second step, they, they try to do big pushes, say in the summertime for the next school year. But there's some times that they'll happen throughout the year. When, yeah.
So an update happens in the summer, then that update goes through our IMC to review to make sure it meets policy procedures and then it comes back to us to approve or?
Typically, when say a math book, a math has an update, they're, they're small, like they find an error.
But this is a math, right? This is something else.
The updates I've seen typically aren't content changes like that. But if that's something we need to look at and then bring it back to review, we would want to do that.
So it, what I would say is, so we do, if there's just a print materials and there's a new version of print materials, those don't, those are not automatically approved. That updated version of the print material goes through IMC.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that it's been totally consistent. For example, Journeys had an update and we still continued. It was, we reviewed it, but it didn't go through the IMC.
Right. But like for a, so this is like a supplemental material versus a, a district-wide adoption, right?
Yes.
So for, for supplemental types of materials, if there's like an updated version of a novel or something, that per policy, right? The, the, the update has to come through IMC.
Yes.
So I would think kind of keeping that, thinking if this is a supplemental material and there's a, I would say, and maybe we could come to some agreement if it's like grammatical errors or something, spelling updates is one thing. But if there's substantive, you know, any kind of content change, material change, then that would qualify as an updated addition that would need to go through a re, another reviewable process.
Yeah, okay.
And that's how I would interpret it.
And then if, if in that, how long does that take? Let's say that middle of the year, some major stuff gets updated.
Yeah, two months usually.
So for two months potentially, you know, all the kids could be exposed to something, who the, who knows, right? I mean, and then I just want to get a call from a parent like, why are you guys teaching this?
Yeah.
Like, ah, I don't know.
We share the same interest, yeah.
What are we doing for the other digital curriculum that we're using? Is, I, I don't imagine this is the only, I mean, there's, there's other curriculum that we're using digitally. What is our, what is our current policy? What have we done with those? I know there's differences, obviously big differences between this and math. But what, what is our policy? Do we have one?
Our other materials for cell standards or just digital in general?
Digital, digital updates.
I don't think.
Do we have a policy?
We've talked about probably needing to look at something like that.
I know we mentioned it last time, but we never came to a conclusion.
I mean, there's, I don't think there's anything, it's not specifically called out in policy about digital materials and how do, how, how do we address updates? Because the, the truth is, I mean, it is true, like digital materials can be much easier updated than a print material. And so whether it's this or anything else.
A lot of the updates are non-substantial. I mean, they're, they're, they're grammatical changes or they swap one picture for another. Are we going to say we need to review every one of those? I mean, I, that, that seems absurd.
I think we, that's where we discuss material content would be. Major updates, I think, would fall in a, a digital policy update like that. Does every, does every school have access to Character Strong? Does every school have a license to that? Because I, I know high schools aren't using anything. I know two middle schools are using something, the other ones are just kind of winging it on their own and doing their own practices.
I don't believe they do all have access. We do have one school right now looking at another material. The IMC is reviewing it. It's called School Connect and it's specifically for high school. It does go down to grades six. So we're reviewing it for, as like I said, we want that menu of resources. And in getting some feedback from our high school principals, our middle school principals, we need to do some work on understanding the cell standards and how to be teaching them at the secondary level with some intentional instruction.
Do we have any other questions, discussion?
I'll say that, you know, my big concern, the last time we talked about it was we didn't have access to the material. And so our only option was just to Google what we could find on it. And that obviously has problematic things to it. We talked, so of course, my first move was to go and check out those particular lessons that were listed online as concerning. And I'll say that that 2021 update looks like it took out anything that was pointed out as a problem before. I didn't have any concern with the K through five. I mean, I didn't look at every single lesson at every, but I did, I've been through a lot of them. K through five, I didn't really have any problems. Six through eight, I, this is where it just becomes subjective because there's topics that are so important to cover. But I also don't, like, I don't know what's appropriate. You know, like, is it appropriate in eighth grade to be, for some eighth graders, it's definitely time to be talking about dating. Some parents aren't going to think that. So I, my only hesitation is just that one key component is, is there a way to, and maybe we're already doing this, but is there a way to let parents know six through eight, the topics that are going to be covered or to give them access as well so they can review at a good time and say, I don't really want. I mean, I, I personally, for my children and my family, don't have any problem. But there are probably some people who might. And I think that they should just be in. there are probably some people who might, and I think that they should just be informed on what those topics are, and if that's not something that they.
The topics you mentioned, yeah.
I'll just give you an example one, just so you know what I'm talking about. So, sorry, I've got to find that tab. So this one was on, this is grade eight, unit four, lesson twenty-one. And the advisory activity was to circle up and then ask a number of questions, and some of them could be invasive. You know, has a friend ever asked you to do something that went against your value? Did you do it? How did you feel? That's a really important discussion, but it requires someone who's very aware and can guide that discussion so that it doesn't become.
It needs to be safe.
Yeah, it needs to be a big discussion. So those are the types of, there's, let's see, I don't think I wrote down anything about.
Well, and I think, um, it needs to be in an appropriate environment. So is this with a counselor in a small group? Is this during health class, which is the comprehensive sexual health standards, where like healthy relationships is one of our standards?
Yeah, from a discussion perspective, I, I looked through K through five, went through just about every one of them. Yeah, it's, I, I didn't see anything overwhelmingly, uh, concerning. Um, a, as I got into the middle school, that's where I had, I, I looked at it. One of the things that I, I felt there was almost none of was any kind of parental involvement. And I think if you're going to talk about social and emotional learning, I, I recognize that not every person, every kid has great parents. But at the same time, for a lot of kids, that should be, they are their best advocates. And, and I think as a, uh, I, I think that should be often being brought up, and that was one of the concerning things. I saw very little mention of, hey, your parents are your, your parents are on your side, they're your advocate, they're your help, um, whi, which I, particularly in middle school, I think i- is something that we should be reinforcing. Um, I, I, also, I, to be honest, the middle school program, I thought was, was not as good as the, the elementary school. So from my perspective, I thought the K, K through five looked okay. I didn't, I didn't see anything terribly objectionable.
So we, so the committee is recommending approval for Second Step digital programs, grades K through eight. Do we have any more discussion? And if we don't, then I'll entertain a motion.
We don't have to, we don't have to approve the middle school, we could just approve like elementary school or something, right?
So we have to make a motion.
I think, I think there was some really important discussions in the six through eights, things that were really timely and that need to be brought up and that kids need to have an opportunity to talk about and, and learn. I just think that we should maybe figure out a system for letting parents know, like, even on a quarterly basis, like this quarter, when social emotional learning, your children will be discussing these topics, even if it's just the unit topics, like bullying and harassment or, I don't know, actually, I think that'd be more comfortable, breaking down the actual lesson titles, because then that can give you a clue as to what you're talking about, and the parents want to, they can look into that more.
And I do think, I don't know, did you see in the dashboard, there are already letters that teachers can send home? So they are, they are prepared, so those can be sent out.
I, I guess the, the point being though is, is it's not as though those, those topics aren't going to be brought up. It's not as though those discussions aren't going to be had. The question is, is are they going to use Second Step's curriculum and ways of going about it? And that's, that's where I thought personally, their way, their approach was one I wasn't particularly thrilled about.
Sure.
You know, to use one example there, in the eighth grade curriculum, if I remember correctly, it talked about creating a movement, um, when talking about bullying, and, and I, I think that's the wrong approach. They're, they're acting like that the, standing up for what is right, standing up for people during bullying is something new, that you have to create something new, that's not new.
Right.
That, that is, that is the expected. That is, that is what we should do. And so it's, it's nothing new. It is what is expected. So I, I thought the approach, personally, I thought the approach, we can do better, there are better programs out there. And, and some of the programs we're, we're already using. So I, to me, I kind of looked at it and said, do we really need this program? Are we, are we adding just to add? Um, that's my opinion.
I'll just say, Kate, I'll just say, we didn't, to my understanding, we didn't pilot this in six through eight, correct? We had no schools that piloted?
Correct, there were a couple who wanted it, but I paused them.
So no middle schools have piloted this at all? But we had a handful, and so another.
I definitely don't think we should approve a curriculum that middle school hasn't piloted. Um, we're teaching S E L anyway, this, it's, it is happening, it is being taught. I don't think we need a.
Is the parent letter home per unit or is it per lesson?
Uh, I think the one, I think they're per unit, I can send them to you.
I know you, do you have any more, any more discussion? I know Brittany's looking for something, but.
Thank you. It was a lot of fun reading through all that.
There's a lot.
So, and, and I, I do want to say, I, I appreciate the, the IMC. As I was going through this, there's a lot to go through, and, and I appreciate them going through all that. I, it, and, and again, it's, this is, us going through it is not a commentary on, on not trusting them, or it is, it is simply saying, look, we take our responsibility equally as important as they do. And, and I think like, uh, Micah said, we're trying to see this in big, bigger picture, even than just those simple qualifications that they were going through. And that's, that's the attitude I have.
I think IFC did a great job, I think they did their job, and I really appreciate it, it wasn't easy. I'm looking at other factors beyond, beyond this as well, like bringing kids back to our schools and, and things like that, so.
If anyone's interested, I found the parent letter and it looks pretty awesome. It's exactly what I was asking for, it says, over the next several weeks, your child will be discussing these things, and it breaks down the definitions they use. And there on the website, it has a little survey that you can fill out, you can come here, and it gives you some suggestions on how to talk about it at home. So one of the suggestions is tell your child about something that made you nervous when you were starting middle school. So that's an element that's involving parents.
I, I guess I'm going to just make a movement, motion then, I'll motion.
Real quick, Josh, so the final recommendation is for recommending approval of Second Step digital program for grades K through eight. And also, also, the other, yeah, the last slide also says specifying additional websites or resources that are not approved for use will be blocked by a key, so. What's that?
It's not, it was at one time.
I checked it.
Okay.
It's open again?
So now.
I want to change that.
Then you, you can make the motion, but just follow that, that recommendation.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Second Step digital program for grades K through five. We've trialed it. Um, I can feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
So if somebody wants a second now, that's fine.
Do we have a second?
Then we can do six to eight separately if we want, and I, I'm, that way we can just move along.
Yeah, how does that work?
Let's make a second motion.
So we have a first for recommending approval for grades K through eight.
No, K through five.
Or K through five.
Which is actually all we need, is the first. Actually, the second.
That's true, so, all right.
Now we actually open it up for discussion technically.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
For me, this is, I understand where everyone's going, but you know, at the same time, we do have to, you know, by law, have to teach S E L and, and all the way through eighth grade. These schools and these, these classrooms do not need to use this if they choose not to. And again, it's, I also believe that we're doing the, the committee a disservice if we're not accepting what they're doing. Uh, and again, I think everyone did, did a working-like job, I went through it, you know, I went through all the other stuff. I think it, it should be, should go all the way through eighth grade.
I'm also okay with it going through eighth, especially nowadays being the, the parental part of it.
Okay. Well, we have a motion to recommend it, the program through grades K through eight, so.
No, K through five.
K through fives, I keep reading the thing, sorry, K through five. So with that then, Patty, if there's no other discussion, call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Connors?
Trying to think through this.
You can amend it, right?
Or you can, we can do all sorts of things.
Can you make a motion?
You can, or you can, we can vote for six to eight.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I, what I don't want to do is give up the K through five, trying to fight for, you know, six, seven, eight.
That's why, that's why I did choose.
Yeah, so what I don't want to do, because I mean, again, I think it's a good program.
You can make a motion after this one.
I don't want to, you know, I don't, I don't want to vote against it and then have it not pass, because then I've lost everything.
You can make a motion after this, right?
My thought is, is get the K through five out of the way, I think we've got plenty of people supporting that. Just get that part done, and then we can discuss six, eight. We can approve them separately. But that way, we just get things done, move it along.
Which is fine, if, if we're going to do that, we're going to have, and we're going to discuss six, seven, eight, then I will, then I will vote yes for this.
Is that, can, I'm sorry, Bronson, can we, can we just clarify that, please? Just, we want to make sure we're good, that way we don't have any.
We can split this up into two motions, right?
Yeah. So right now, the board is just voting on the mo, the one motion, that's what's on the floor. The motion that's on the floor is to approve Second Step digital program for K through five.
Yes.
That's what's on the floor.
Yes. Can we?
And if, if that motion needs to be amended, the person that made the motion would amend it before you vote on it.
But, but if we wanted to, after, let's say this passed, then could someone else make a motion to discuss or to approve six to eight?
Yeah, that would be a separate motion, yeah. But right now, you're just voting on the K through five.
K through five, I just want to make sure we're doing this appropriately, okay, so, uh, go ahead.
We can just kind of move the discussion, and the, the part that's controversial, we can put it aside, get, get the part that's not done.
Okay.
Okay, um, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gliddhale?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So now someone can.
So now someone can motion for six to eight.
Just to discuss it or to approve?
So if you make a motion, then it opens it up for discussion.
Getting it on the table to discuss.
I move to recommend approval of Second Step digital program for grades six through eight.
Okay. Perfect, so we have first and a second. Any other discussion for six through eight?
Now we can discuss six, eight.
Then discuss.
Yeah.
If, and if there is no discussion, then we will proceed to a roll call vote for six through eight.
I, 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 I get it, I understand some of the trepidation, for lack of a better word. But going back to, it seems we get to use resolution four as a discussion point all the time. But that really is a prevailing philosophy of mine, that decisions should be made as locally as possible, because local understands the community and their, you know, their constituents best. So that's the reason why I voted yes on resolution four, was because I'm okay with the state setting a, a learning standard. I just want our district to be able to decide how to implement it. And I feel the same way about the schools, that each school, as you go to each school, they are their own little universe, you almost cannot compare one to the other. And those administrators and those teachers understand their demographics, their students, their families, their community best. And I trust that they will use the material that best suits their community. And so if all we're doing today is just saying, here's one additional resource, and trusting that they will, you know, use, go through it and do their due diligence and determine whether or not it's a good fit for their family, their community, then I think that this is just giving someone another option, and there's things about it I really liked. And especially now that this parent component is here.
Sounds like you'll vote yes then.
Well, I will vote yes, I'm trying to convince you about it.
Oh, yeah, not against me.
Thank you, Brittany.
Yeah.
What else, any other discussion? Everybody's kind of discussioned out, I guess, or?
I can talk tonight.
I know, I know.
I, I can appreciate Brittany, and I, and I, I actually, that's why, for me, from a budget perspective, once I found out, I'm, I'm okay from a budgetary perspective, how they want to use their money is up to them. I, I think our role as board members is, is to say, do we think this is the best or, or good content? Because if, if we're essentially giving our stamp of approval that we say this is good content, we think this is great stuff to use. And if I think it's anything less, personally, if I think it's anything less than great, I, I probably shouldn't be putting it out there, um, because it now has our stamp of approval. So that's, that's my concern, is, is it needs my stamp of approval of saying, I think this is great. K through five, I thought was great. Six through eight, like I said, I, I thought there were some fundamental issues that, uh, particularly not involving parents in a lot of the discussion, or, or in, in their teaching, when their, their programs, they don't say, talk to your parents, they don't say, go to your parents. I, I think that needs to be part of any good S E L program. Um, because we should be building and strengthening families and, and trying to improve those relationships. Um, so, so that's why, while I agree, local control is, is very, is, is great. If it's going to come with a stamp of approval from me, it has to reflect me saying, yeah, I think this actually is a great program, so.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. My, my, I, the concerns I had about the curriculum were all in the middle school. We didn't pilot it in the middle school. Those are, those are my concerns.
And, and the truth is, is because we didn't pilot it in the middle schools, there's no one that has been using it that won't be able to use it now. We're not taking anything away from them, so.
And most of the middle schools aren't even using an S E L curriculum right now anyways, they're, they're doing their, their thing, so. If there's no other discussion, Patty, let's do the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
No.
Ms. Gliddhale?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Mr. Galbraith?
No.
Thank you.
All right, so that wraps up unfinished business. We have no new business. Our next meeting agenda, we will have a study session, uh, which will dive into more of, uh, what we've discovered with so, social emotional learning. We also may want to add a discussion around digital curriculum stuff, so maybe half and half, unless someone else has another topic for a study session.
Update. Can, I, oh, I don't know how varsity tutors, can we just maybe, I, I'm just interested if there's any way we can see utilization on varsity tutors, and if there's any outcomes, outcomes based on that. Um, not, I, I recognize the budgetary constraints, we may not be able to do exactly varsity tutors, but maybe perhaps trying to find a community outlet that would allow us to do something similar. Because I think, I, I want to know if varsity tutors is filling a need and we're going to see a potential lag or, or a fall in student performance once varsity tutors is gone. I don't know, because I don't know how much is being utilized.
Yeah, I can follow up with the board, just, you know, yeah, with, um, usage data. I won't have, we don't have any correlation data.
Yeah, I think people probably would, but utilization would be great, just seeing how, how often people are using it and what they're using it for.
Okay.
Just because that's another program, in addition to the, the mental health stuff, that's going to be going away, that if it's been highly used, we, we probably want to see at least, is there something we can do to fill a gap?
Sure, okay. Um, in addition to our study session, we also have our board business meeting after. We're talking about, uh, topics include preliminary budget twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, P E credit, the three-hundred series policies, which.
Some policy updates.
Policy updates for the year. Policy twenty-four nineteen, performance-based pathway for high school graduation. Policy twenty-three forty, race in the curriculum, and policy procedure thirty-two eleven, gender-inclusive schools are on the next meeting, which is a full meeting, so if you have any additional topics, please let me know, and I'll work with Dr. Pierce to get those, uh, on future meetings. Right now, we are going to go into an executive session for thirty minutes, so till nine-thirty, um, discuss a legal issue, and there's no more business to conduct, and after that, I will come and adjourn the meeting. Okay? Thank you.